Again, we are coming to you remotely. First order of business is approval of minutes and we do have two sets of minutes in our packet this evening, both from last week, July 29th. The first set, the business meeting, and the second set, executive session. Maya?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular minutes with a slight correction on page five. Special education students, I believe it should say that they would be attending four or four and a half days per week.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, okay, no, I'm mistaken. It's a lot going on my screen right now. I don't know if people are seeing at home, but we have a lot of guests with us tonight. So that has passed, and then the executive session minutes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I have a meeting, so I'll have to call you back. Yeah, it's not gonna be over till-
Karen, can you mute, please?
Karen.
So Dave, that has motioned to pass the executive session minutes or approve the executive session minutes. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 5-0, great. Next correspondence. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. David Katania, warrant report.
Yes. Okay, warrants in the amount of $19,928.43, $17,197.08, $20,154.74, $26,918.15, $8,308.99, $2,593.11, $147,293.53, $61,653.28, $26,996.47, for a grand total of $331,000... Sorry, $331,000... All tongue tied. $331,044.13, signed yesterday.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions on the warrant report from the committee? Okay. So moving right along is public forum, and this is our first public forum since we started the remote meetings in March, that we do have some emails that were sent to our public forum email address, just as a reminder to the community that that address is NPSchoolcommittee@norwood.k12.ma.us. And if you do have anything that you would like us to read at public forum at our next meeting, it will actually be on Monday, August 10th at 5:00 p.m. So you can send anything to that email address from now until next Monday at 5:00. And just a reminder to the community that when you write us for public forum, you do have to identify yourself. We are unable, due to our policies, to read emails that we get anonymously. And tonight, we did have three emails that were all anonymous, so I cannot read those three emails, but what I will do, so the information is shared, is forward those emails later to the school committee and to Dr. Thompson, so you have that feedback. But I do have four emails to read now. And I'm working off of two screens, so apologies for looking away as I read this. The first email was sent to us from Katie Button, who is a Norwood resident who lives in the Prescott School District. And Katie writes, "Dear Dr. Thompson, members of the school committee and all the staff..." "...the stress, the research, the planning, the brainstorming, the meetings, the tears, and the frustration, but most of all, thank you for doing all of this for the staff and the children of Norwood. My profession calls for me to communicate with people who have tested positive for COVID. I speak to people every day who have no concern for compliance. I could write pages of examples of teens who don't quarantine after exposures, or parents who lie to DPH about contact tracing so their friends don't get angry. Some people are embarrassed when they test positive. Some people lie because they can't afford to stay home from work. Some people don't believe that this virus is dangerous. Our school community..." Sorry, I just closed my document. Give me one second. "...our school community needs to trust each other in order to remain safe, but that is the one variable no one can control or plan for. It is that truth that makes me very concerned for all of the students and staff returning to school. This past week, I personally spoke to over 20 Norwood Public Schools staff members and asked if they feel safe returning to school in September. All but one said no, they do not feel safe returning to school. They are scared, and because of my job, I know that they have every reason to be terrified. You have all done an exceptional job. The tentative plans you have made are detailed and thorough. I want them to work. I know you do too, but to quote one of the teachers, 'We are taking a very big risk for very little reward. I respectfully request that you follow the path of many other Massachusetts towns and delay the hybrid opening in favor of a virtual start. Every student, staff member, and the family within the Norwood Public Schools system is too valuable to take this risk. Thank you for doing this impossible job. Whatever you decide, I am grateful for your hard work, dedication, and transparency. Kindly, Katie Button.'" Our second email for public forum has come from Kelsey Bauer, also a resident of Norwood. And Kelsey writes, "Hello. I am the mother of a first-grade student in the Norwood Public Schools, as well as a first-grade teacher in another district in Massachusetts. I have great concerns about reopening schools this fall, even in a hybrid format. I have been following the Norwood plans closely and appreciate how detailed and thought-out these plans are. But that being said, while remote learning is not ideal, the continuation of the spread of the virus and even more rapidly is not ideal either. Just in Georgia this month, 260 school employees have to be quarantined due to the reopening of school." And then she quotes an article, and the article from the Washington Post says, "On Wednesday, teachers in Georgia's largest school district returned to elementary, middle, and high school campuses to start in-person planning for the fall semester. By the next day, 260 district employees had been banned from entering their schools, either because they tested positive for the coronavirus or had been directly exposed to someone who had." End quote. This is a scenario that will most likely be familiar to our school system should in-person learning in the fall occur. Similarly, Israel thought that they had beat the virus and was eager to get life back to normal again." Next, she's quoting from an article in the New York Times. The quote begins, "Confident in had beaten the coronavirus and desperate to reboot a devastated economy, the Israeli government invited the entire student body back in late May. Within days, infections were reported at a Jerusalem high school, which quickly mushroomed into the largest outbreak in a single school in Israel, possibly the world. The virus rippled out to the students' homes and then to other schools and neighborhoods, ultimately infecting hundreds of students, teachers, and relatives." End quote. Is our community prepared to deal with the potential town widespread? I truly understand people's thoughts that if we can go to the grocery store, Target, or even the doctor's office now, we should be able to get the students back in the classroom. However, classrooms are collaborative, interactive, close proximity, engaging environments. My classroom is one, is a one-on-one way aisle, or just me and one other person in an office that is sanitized anytime someone walks in or out of it. My classroom and most elementary school classrooms are German-fested factories. It is not German-fested due to the lack of ability, effort, or desire to keep it clean, it is just the nature of the beast. It appears Norwood does not plan for full in-person experience for the fall. However, students and staff will be exposed even during a hybrid model. Families who have spent so much time and effort protecting their family members will be exposed to at least 10 of their families via the hybrid model. Each family has their own exposure rate. While my family has been wearing masks and venturing out minimally, my daughter's classmates may not have. Her classmates may have been in daycare or camp this summer, had various teenage centers who have been exposed, went on vacations. Have you seen how many families are still going to Florida this summer, et cetera? Yes, there will be a choice that I can keep my daughter home to do remote learning. Will others attend a hybrid model? But this exposure will not be restricted within the walls of our school. When, not if, the virus spreads throughout the classroom, it will spread throughout the entire school. Imagine the learning disruption this will cause and community disruption. Students and families will have to quarantine more than once during this school year should be reopened too early. Parents must be aware that should students return to in-person learning, yes, even in a hybrid format, it will not be the school they are used to. Recession will be independent spaced out play. Bathroom breaks will have to be monitored for contact tracing. Lunch for many students will be in the classroom. Students will rarely, if at all, leave their classroom during the school day. Students will be confined to their seats for learning. If a teacher or nurse suspects a child could have COVID-related symptoms, they will go to an isolation room until they can be picked up. Student, teachers, and in some cases, entire classrooms will often have to quarantine for 14 days or get negative tests if they are able to get tested with results before 14 days, before returning to school. Speaking from experience, I desperately want to be back in the classroom and in front of my students, as I'm sure Norwood's teachers do. I love their smiles, their laughs, and all the fun that we have. I love watching the light bulbs go off and celebrating all sorts of victories, academically, socially, or even sports and home-related. Teaching students remotely is not ideal in any way, but to me, it is better than the alternative, a lot more sick community members, and even lives lost. Starting remotely, starting full of remote, easing into hybrid, and then potentially full in-person learning is the way to monitor and contain the spread as much as we possibly can. Norwood teachers did an amazing job with remote learning with the limited preparation time the state had before shutdown. Imagine if the decision to remain remote came sooner rather than later. The teachers could receive so much professional development in how to engage and achieve maximum success during remote learning this fall. To keep students, teachers, and the community safe, it is better to wait to return to in-person learning until classrooms can return to positive, healthy learning environments. I understand this decision is not an easy one, and regardless, there will be community members that will not be happy. Appreciate all you do for the teachers and students of the Norwood Public Schools." Thank you, Kelsey Bauer. The next email that we received for public forum tonight is from Brenna Green, and Brenna is a Norwood resident, also in the Prescott School District. Brenna writes to us tonight, "Dear Norwood School Board members, thank you for your service to the town of Norwood. I am sure that this role is filled with difficult conversations and decisions right now, and I appreciate your desire to hear from community members to find a best solution from a sea of bad options. I am writing to you from the perspective of an NPS parent of an incoming kindergartner and a public elementary school teacher in a neighboring town. Although I have many thoughts and concerns that run through my mind daily, here are the ones I think are most relevant. Number one, the hybrid model presents severe logistical issues for parents who work outside the home, especially homes where two parents are essential workers and work outside the home. My family is one of these families. My husband is the first responder, and I will likely be returning to my school building full-time. The uncertainty around before and after care, in addition to only two days of school, will mean that our family will likely have to hire a nanny. This is a cost that does not fit within our family's budget. I've heard rumors that districts may offer full-time placement for essential workers and teachers, children. I hope that Norwood is considering this as part of their plan. Number two, I am very concerned that children's experiences at school will be a negative one. Although summer camps have been happening, and I feel those models, including ample outdoor and playtime, have mitigated the negative effects that the COVID precautions had on those programs, I find it hard to picture an enjoyable school day for children under the current DUCI and CDC guidelines. I say this as a teacher who has taught children as young as pre-K and as old as fourth grade and as a mom of a kindergartner. I am not sure what social or academic benefit my child will get out of her two days of the in-person schooling this year, besides the fact that it'll provide some childcare for our family. Number three, I am concerned that districts, including Norwood, may be underestimating the number of families who will be opting for online-only instruction or un-enrolling to homeschool. I've also heard of families forming pods and pushing teachers with enticing pay for teaching the pod. Does Norwood feel confident that they have the staff for the fall? Does Norwood know how many families will be opting for online only? What will NPS do if there's a sudden shift in staff numbers or enrollment numbers of children? Number four, as a teacher, I think it is important to start the year in person, as we will inevitably end up online only during the winter months. I hope districts like Norwood might get creative, and even if the majority of teaching is done remotely, provide tents or other locations for in-person meetings with children. I would love to split my incoming class into three cohorts and meet with approximately eight kids each for one hour from 9:00 to 12:00 a few days a week. Obviously, some children might not be able to get to that location, and perhaps they could zoom in to the session. I think that districts should think way outside the box in things like this, especially if it is not safe to return to buildings. Lastly, number five, another important thing I think school districts need to consider is that this is an incredibly unique year. I do not think the DUCI guidelines are realistic in expecting every standard to be taught. If we are hoping to provide children with a place to go, a place to connect with- ...it's all possible in a safe way, in my opinion. I would love to run a project-based thematic or almost camp-style program this fall for my students. I would focus on their social, emotional wellbeing, their physical health and safety." To the email address right as we got started, so let me find that one. This one comes from Kate Smith, who has identified herself as a town meeting member in District 3. And Kate writes to us tonight, "Dear Norwood School Committee members, I am very concerned about the possibility of beginning the school year with a..." With this in mind, I don't believe that it is safe to consider bringing our students, teachers, and staff back together in a matter of weeks. The fact is, our school buildings in Norwood are old. Many of them have poor ventilation and several classrooms have no outside windows. Considering what we know about COVID-19 pre-existing air particles, in my opinion, the condition of our buildings makes teaching and learning in person a high risk and unjustifiable. I am an educator myself, and I completely understand that in-person education is important for students, their families, and teachers. However, I do not feel the science supports bringing people into these buildings at this time. I ask as a member of the Norwood community that you please consider a remote start with a phased-in hybrid model, once the science supports safely bringing people into the buildings. I hope that as a committee and administration, you will commit to planning for a successful school year, rather than putting into place a plan that is not reflective of the science. As we've seen from the districts nationwide that have gone back to in-person teaching and learning over the last few days, infections will happen. It cannot be avoided. I do not think we should risk the lives of the Norwood Public Schools community. Thank you for your time and attention this evening." And again, this was from Kate Smith. So at this time, 7:25 on August 5th, I am gonna deem that public forum is closed, because those are the only emails that we have received that were non-anonymous for public forum. And just to let the community know and the committee know, we did receive a number of other emails that were not for public forum, but was the community reaching out. There were seven emails that we received yesterday. All seven of those, I was able to respond to. I did CC the school committee and Dr. Thompson on all my responses. There were five that came in today that I have not had the chance to respond to, but I will after our meeting tonight. And as per protocol, all the committee members and Dr. Thompson will be CC'd on those as well. So typically, we do not engage in public forum in terms of a question or answer, but everything that was just shared here, we can discuss in more detail later on in our agenda when we talk about reopening. So next step, announcements. Dr. Thompson, do we have any announcements this evening?
None at this time. I'll make them part of my regular report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So appearances, we do have one appearance this evening for the elementary handbook. Mrs. Ferrer is listed on our agenda, although I do believe we are now joined by all of our lovely principals. Welcome.
Hi, Patty. Mrs. Ferrer, do you want to take us through the handbook for the elementary?
Yes, you know, basically, there are very minimal changes. There is a sort of a disclaimer on the front of every handbook that we're assuming we're going to be updating or giving out some sort of supplement that's COVID-related, as opposed to changing the whole handbook and all our procedures and stuff. So the white pages have very minimal changes. The white pages for everybody out there are the comment pages that are the same for all elementary schools. The only updates were report card grades, excuse me, the marking periods, and any dates that needed to be changed in the white pages. And then in the blue pages, pretty much, there were no changes at any elementary school, or will it, except for updating the new cost of extended day and anything also that was sort of date-related. But I think each of the new handbooks has the same disclaimer on the front cover.
Thank you. Questions, discussion from the committee on the handbooks that are in our packet?
Easy.
Maya?
Motion to approve the elementary handbooks.
Thank you. Is there a second? Joan, thank you.
I have a second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the elementary handbooks?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 5-0. That was probably the easiest handbook approval ever, so.
I had to show Mr. Riley how to do it. All right, so we'll be hanging out. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so moving right along to our superintendent report, and a very important topic of tonight. Dr. Thompson, along with the administrators who have joined us this evening, are here to share more about the reopening plan. So, Dr. Thompson?
Yep, let me bring up the, I have another slideshow for you folks, that everyone at home can follow along. It's in present, so if you can just let me know when it's, you can see that.
It's good.
It's good?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so we will get started. All right, so I want to start with a few clarifying points. First, this has been a monumental task, trying to redesign school as we have once known it in less than three months. There is a multitude of constraints and considerations. I think one thing that might have caught all of these discussions and such is how complex schools are, especially when you have experts who have never worked in a school trying to tell you how to do it. Start, we will be model models. We're talking about a reopening, we're talking about a first stage. The reason why the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asked us to look at models is because they expected that we would be moving between the three models. So I need to be very clear about that to families at home. This is not the way school will be this fall. This is how we're going to start school this fall. There will be times when a classroom is in full remote, there are times when a elementary school might be in full remote, and there are times when the entire district might be in remote. So you might have your student at high school have, you know, a hybrid class or be in person for a class, meanwhile, the elementary school is in person. So a lot of people talk about this in regards to childcare issues. The reality is, is that depending, and even if we're remote, we might have infections and outbreaks and what have you, so there's no guarantee that we are going to be in one model for the entire year. We did get stakeholder feedback, and this has been used to inform our decision-making and our process going forward. No one has made a commitment. I had several people contact me about, "I don't know what to choose." We have not asked anyone to choose anything. We have simply asked you what your inclination or what you are feeling right now is. The other thing that has come up is that Blackboard Connect calls and emails for each of these surveys, they were posted on social media, Twitter, and the school Facebook account. They were also sent out during Blackboard. If you opt out of either a phone call or an email in Blackboard for a regular message, a communication, an outreach, you basically turn off that function. So if you opt out of emails for something else, you might not get an email you want. So that needs to be fixed, and you can contact our tech department to deal with that. I would strongly urge everyone to just either, you know, disconnect the call, but do not opt out of calls and emails, because when there is a regular outreach, and obviously emergency phone calls are different, those go to multiple phones. I don't think a survey needs to go to your cell phone, your work phone, and every other phone around, which is why we sent it out as an outreach. But if you opt out of those, you take yourself completely out of that part of the system. So the financial implication, yeah, I am so tired of Kim speaking. The financial aspect of this is pivotal, and we do not fully understand the entire financial landscape. So while we need to start talking about where we're going to plan going forward, this is not an absolute. Things might change. We might discover something on the financial front or one of the other constraints that make us have to take a step back and relook at our original plan. Transportation is a wild card. We are still waiting, we're still at week two, we're looking at bus routes. We do not have bus routes. Giving kids to school is important. Yes, there is, you know, we only have to transport students in grades up to grade six, two miles away. That is definitely possible, but would definitely create an equity problem with several of our students, especially with working parents, where they could not get into school. Staffing the models, this is difficult. We have, not only do we have staff that have, that have health concerns and families that have health concerns, so all of those things are who is going to be where are important factors we need to collect in order to go forward. So the process, so the first process was to undergo a feasibility study, look at facilities, look at the capacity for all the different aspects of our school system, staffing, you know, HVAC, distance in classrooms, how many desks we can fit in, surveying our stakeholders to get a general gist of how people are feeling about different models. This was done several times, and the reason it was done several times is because more information had gone out and people had gotten more information and maybe thought deeper about some of these options. We've been working on curriculum instruction and our curriculum model since the end of school. We had teachers in this summer working on that to create a better curriculum and instruction model for our students in the expectation that we would be floating between some sort of in-person and some sort of fully remote process, even before the state came out with their model. So that's what we were doing there. Looking at facilities and safety, creating protocols, creating, and, you know, safety and cleaning things, all of those have been in process. We still need to go back, we have first drafts, we need to go back and we need to finish those up. Transportation, I've already mentioned that, lunch planning, you know, it's, again, we need to have social distancing, needs to be at no less than six feet when you're not wearing a mask, it's hard to eat lunch with a mask on. So those are ongoing, and how many meals can we get in, and what is the best way to do that? Staffing, financial, student placement, we're going to eventually ask for parents to make some sort of choice as to where their students will be, whether they want, we are required to offer an remote-only option, and that's, you know, first and foremost for those students who have health concerns, so that they can continue with their education. But knowing that influences our distancing, influences our other placement, our staff assignments, et cetera, et cetera. So the full-person model is, we've discovered through our feasibility, is not an option. And I need to be very clear, this was thoroughly considered and analyzed, and as you know, as you've heard us say before, we have old buildings, old elementary schools, we have small- small elementary schools, and we have overcrowded elementary schools. Part of the problem, or part of the reason for looking at redoing our middle school is because if we move the fifth grade up there, it would alleviate some of the space problems we have. Those who've spent time in our, in our elementary schools know that we have art and library and computers in hallways, not in separate learning spaces. Kids are meeting in hallways, and this is, you know, a issue of just more kids than, and programs in our buildings than we had 50, 60 years ago. We reviewed all levels of safety protocols, that includes the CDC, the DESC, the Mass Department of Public Health, as well as consulting regularly with the Norwood Board of Health on these safety protocols, and we keep going, we go back, we go back. And we determined that because of space, transportation, and social distancing of three feet or less, we would have to, in order to put every person in our schools, we would have to be at a max of three feet. And in other places like the high school, we would be less than three feet. That is not something that I personally would consider. I know that the new science coming out is saying that three feet with other mitigating, you know, masks and hand washing is enough. That makes me a little uncomfortable, to say the least. So between those two things, the fact that we cannot fit them and cannot assure social distancing, transportation, if you remember, I mentioned before, school buses can only carry, our school buses can only carry 24 students, that's one-third less. That literally means that in order to bus the students we currently bus, we would need to run three runs to every entry and exit of all three of our tiers. That is a time and cost piece that just cannot be done. All we'll be doing is driving around, and I don't even want to consider what the cost of that would be, the disruption to the education, how little time kids would be either waiting for a bus or riding on a bus, or waiting for the rest of their class to show up. So the survey results, I mentioned before, we've used these to inform our staffing and student enrollment, to give us an idea of what kind of numbers we're talking about. It indicates our stakeholders' sentiments. Again, it's not a commitment, and these have changed over time as more information has become available. And I'll go through some of the highlights of these. So this is a staff survey that was handed out earlier in the process, and it asked the current level of case infections remain stable or continue to decline to match which of these three proposed models, and this is our teaching staff. And hybrid, they were comfortable with that at 48.5%. In-person, 29.8%, and fully remote, 21.7%. So on this one, we're talking about social distancing of three feet. So one on the far left is very concerned, five is not concerned, and you can see that at a three-foot distance, 37, 35.7% of our staff were very concerned with a three-foot distance, and you add a two onto that at 25%, you can see that well more than half of our staff would be very concerned with a three-foot. There are children in that situation. So the next model is that hybrid, half in, half out. You can see that the numbers changed slightly there with a six-foot difference between, you know, 45 and four is a 22% there, the children, send their children to school. And then, you know, going whole, you know, not doing in-person instruction in any way or form, but doing remote learning only, not reporting to a school building. You can see that 42.2% of the parents indicated that they would be very unlikely to choose that option to just send their kids. And again, only 17.6, and you'll see how that kind of follows through on the next set of family surveys, you know, would be likely to opt for that. So now we're looking at the latest family survey. This is still open, it will remain open until tomorrow afternoon at about 3 o'clock. If you have not done it, the links for that are on the Facebook page. Again, it was sent out in an email last week. It is also on the Twitter feed. Pretty sure it's also posted on the website if you have not filled it out. But you can see in kindergarten, because at this point last week, we talked about a full in-person model not being doable, and that we were looking at either full remote or more than likely a hybrid model. So we put that out to families to see where they were to get an idea, because again, the staffing piece, and how many students will be in the classroom will influence how far apart we can put the desks. And in kindergarten, the remote-only academy is about 26, 27%. The rest would be looking at a hybrid option. At the elementary, remote-only, again, 27%, and hybrid being 72%. And the middle school, 79%, with only 20% roughly looking at a remote-only option. For our high school, you know, again, that number goes up, and I think a lot of that has to do with the specialization that you see at the high school, where there's 82% for a hybrid and about 18% for remote-only. So, you know, using that to try to estimate how many kids we would actually have in classrooms allows us to think about what our classrooms would look like. So what are the benefits of a hybrid model, or starting with a hybrid model? It allows some in-person instruction in smaller and socially-distanced groups, that's not something we can do in a full in-person. It lowers numbers, lower numbers are workable for space and hopefully transportation. It's doable, we might only have to have two waves in some cases coming in, not three or four. Creates smaller cohorts of students, lowering contact and changing over of the cohorts and reducing the outbreak, the risk of an outbreak. And it allows, by having students come in, allows the setting of class routines, orientation to educational technology, and building relationships between teachers and students. So this past year, we switched over to remote, and you've heard me say several times that I'm very proud of the teaching staff and how well they did making that transition to a vehicle, especially at the lower grades, had never considered using, and the growth over time with those tools was absolutely amazing. But we had, we had an advantage at that point of the year. Students had been with their teachers, students had used technology such as Freckle and Renaissance in their classrooms, so it was a pretty easy switch to go from, you know, doing it in the classroom to doing it home, knowing what the teacher's expectations were, having relationships with the teacher, the teacher knew the kids, the teacher knew the families. That really only happens in a face-to-face environment. So having the opportunity to do that, when we can do that, when it is considered scientifically safe to do that, should really be something that we consider. However, there are challenges. This whole, this whole thing is a challenge. You've heard me mention tiered bus runs, staggered starts. We've got to figure out traffic flow and times when kids are going, we have to stagger when kids are going to be going to the lunchroom, we have to stagger when kids are going to be dismissed moving in the hallways. There's a whole bunch of challenges around how we're going to move kids in the school, maintaining social distancing, how do we do lunch with social distancing? The required remote learning academy is a challenge. So we are required by the state to offer a remote-only that mimics the school day, that has students interacting with teachers, attendance taken, grades taken. This, one of the other challenges, we're going to need to increase staff. In order to do this, in order to have multi-modes of education happening at the same time with the same number of kids, inherently means more people to do the work. We are trying and committed to retaining art, music, PE. One of the strengths of the Norwood Public Schools is a focus on the whole child. We don't really want to go down the road where we are, we don't want to go down the road where we're taking those things that make learning interesting to students away, work on the social-emotional part of learning. So we're committed to try to keep moving in this model in a way that retains our specials. And of course, the big one, I'm affectionately calling it the F-word, funding. We are still waiting for a state budget. We did get some good news about Chapter 70, at least for the first quarter of this coming year, on what has been proposed. We are still waiting for the Congress, you know, the Congress and the Senate and the White House to make decisions and come to an agreement on a second stimulus bill that is supposedly going to help states and local school systems. So what does it look like? What does this hybrid look like? What does this remote academy look like at kindergarten, elementary, at the Coakley, and at Norwood High School? So we'll start a little bit at the high school. So, and I mentioned this, this is a slide from last, the high school's a little different. We wanted to try keep the model similar across the district. And again, you've got older students that are working or watching younger students and realizing that and being a priority. So early in-person dismissal on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, those are two different cohorts, with synchronous remote sessions in the afternoon, full-day remote synchronous learning on Wednesdays, a grab-and-go lunch dismissal every day at the high school, students are in session. It maintains the integrity of all high school programming and student schedule choices. And this is the, this is a key challenge at the high school. We don't want to water down our academic programming, we don't want to limit transcripts for college, we don't want to limit opportunities. So how do we do that at the high school level, maintaining our academic integrity and still offering kids the programs that we have? So if we start limiting how many kids we have in classrooms and not looking at this piece, then, you know, we've got, we've got kids that can't get classes, and they've got holes in their schedule, we can't fill them. The other thing that is nice about the schedules we propose is that it actually offers a student support block, so they can check in with teachers, common playing time by department. So again, using that collaboration to increase the viability of what we're doing for our students. And of course, the big caveat here is that we are still investigating transportation and how a midday dismissal of a high school would work. Just because they're dismissed does not mean they're done. And let me just show that with you. So this is, hopefully you can read that, folks. But this is what a sample hybrid schedule at the high school would look like. So, and again, cohort one, we've been calling it blue and gold, but cohort one, day one, you can see they have period one, period two, period three, period four, grab and go lunch, they go home, then there's department meetings, and then they do two online classes. Okay? So even though, so the kids go home, have lunch, and have a break, but they still go back to learning, they're still supposed to be in class, and again, attendance is taken, grades are being done. And you can see how that works on Tuesday. And a similar sort of thing for Thursday and Friday. On Wednesday, you've got meeting time, and the win block is that student support block, and you can see how you have all online classes on Wednesday. Part of our rationale for having Wednesday as a remote day is to be able to clean between cohorts, have a cool-off, if you will. And you can see that rotating schedule again on Thursday and Friday for the other half of the kids. So half of the class would show up period one, day one, and the other half of period one would show up on day one cohort two on Thursday. So looking at the middle school, this is the middle school schedule, same sort of thing. MB is short for Mustang Block, which again, is that support and check-in time. So you've got Mustang Block, and period one, two, three, four, five, six, and you end the day with a Mustang Block, and on Tuesday, you go two, three, four, and end with one. Wednesday's the all-remote day, and you can see how every class meets for a period of time during the remote session on Wednesday, and that would continue on through for Thursday and Friday. And you can see the Thursday pieces for the gold group. The middle school is on a six-day schedule, so it would keep kind of rotating through. It wouldn't necessarily be Monday, Monday would be day F, but you kind of get the idea. And again, these are draft schedules, folks. So just to give you an idea, and, you know, one of the letter writers did, did make a note of how school will be different. Yeah, it's going to be different. The classrooms are not going to be, there's not going to be rugs and sitting-on-the-rug time, and again, because we have, we're looking to keep close to, as close to six-foot difference between, between our students and our staff as possible. So a lot of the extra things are being taken out of the classrooms, the desks are spread out to maintain social distancing, and you can see how that doesn't quite look as interactive and as fun as it has in the past. Okay, so the elementary schedule, so in the elementary, again, you have, you know, Monday, Tuesday, in-school, Wednesday, everybody's home, Thursday, Friday, remote, for those who are in Monday, Tuesday, and, you know, those that are in-school on Thursday, Friday would be doing remote on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Wednesday is remote for all of them. So, and this is kind of, maybe you can see, you know, the in-person cohort, so students will participate in a daily morning Google Meet, okay? And then you've got, you have classes, they're going to class. 30 to 60 minutes in live pieces, in the remote piece, 30 minutes, which the research on remote learning in elementary is saying is the max, that elementary students can actually do remote, remote learning. But you can see that they are checking in on the remote piece, weekly learning plans, checking in a Google Hangouts, a classroom, Google Classroom, and CSO, which is an interactive way of putting drawings and other pieces, more like a portfolio or collection of work for daily specifics throughout the day. They're completing assignments, they're maybe looking at pre-recorded videos and things like that. Again, the math program comes with the instruction, that's how it works in our regular classroom, completing assignments. So there is midday break, okay? So have lunch, get outdoors, play games. We also need to schedule in here mask breaks at all levels, and that's where students are going outside, taking off the mask, being more than six feet away from each other, but just taking a break. So that is the middle school. Each day will end with an end-of-day meeting and wrap-up, and setting up for the next day and preparing for the next day. Here we have an elementary classroom, this is one of the Calan classrooms, and again, you can see the rugs are out of the room, the chairs are out of the room. You know, it's kind of stark, but at least we're able to come together. So the school department is tasked with choosing a reopening model. And this is where we plan to start, or what our, what our planning process is going to be for a start. There are still details to work out in our plan, there are still details to come back to and double-check once we get more information. And, you know, the pivot points or the hinges are staffing, funding, and transportation, those, the big things that are next. And again, we're going to be working in multiple models next year. So when parents say this isn't good for, you know, working parents, I fully understand that. I'm not quite sure how we can be as safe as possible and be, and do that at the same time. And that is frustrating, because that kind of has always been our role, but we're not in the same situation we've had been in the past. And we may look at, so we are looking at 10 days of training, which was negotiated at a state level. So the school year would be 170 days and not 180 days. So depending on the planning for that, we might look at a phased-in piece, we talked a little bit about that. Someone had mentioned Georgia. If you've looked at how Georgia, I don't want to pick on too many people from Georgia, my wife's father's family is from Georgia, but if you look at how Georgia has handled this crisis, I would say that that would not be the first place I would look on how to manage this piece. So what could change? Again, transportation, we could find out that it's going to be too difficult, or we don't have the funding to do transportation, and we're looking at, you know, only transporting up through sixth grade over two miles. I have reservations with that, and I've shared that before with members of school committee and members of the community, in that that is an equity piece. I don't want to see kids not being able to get to school, because we don't have to transport ninth graders and 10th graders, they're not old enough to drive yet. Staffing is going to be an issue, and if we're able to hire more staff, the lunch piece, funding, space. The lunch piece, funding, space. And again, we are committed to get to six feet or as close to six feet as we can. Some of that determines, is going to be determining based on how many are deciding to go with the remote academy option. So talking a little bit, little bit about the remote academy. And again, this is a piece, we still need to work out a tremendous amount of details, but I've said these before, and I will say them again. So, parents have a choice. The choice is if they are not comfortable sending their kids to school in an in-person format even for part of the year, which might be, then they can choose to sign up for the Remote Learning Academy. And you can change out of that, but I will be asking the school committee to set a limit, probably about forty-five days, which is about a quarter. It's going to be difficult to be caught moving people back and forth. We are looking at two different ways or combination of ways of staffing that. One is teachers that we might have in the district who are not able, for various reasons, to do in-person instruction. The other is the state today just came out with two remote learning options where you can buy seats, which might be something that we look at at the higher grades where we have specialized classes depending. But they would follow the same mass curriculum that we are following in our regular schools. Okay, we would group students into into classes or in the high school, assign them to classes to do that. At first grade, you might not be just with, you know, kids from your elementary school. You might be working with some kids from other elementary schools, depending on the grade level and how many sign up. But this, this will be, because the commissioner has has said this, he is expecting remote learning, be it academy or if we're in a remote model, a remote mode, to mimic a school day, to have consistent engagement by teaching staff with students. So this is not the three-hour model we started with last year when this was all new. This is going to be parallel or similar to an in-person school day, whether it is taught by our teachers or whether it is taught by one of the companies that the state has gone through. Because there are teachers on that end as well. But again, in any remote situation, attendance is taken, grades are given, and we're going to have to have credits and GPA and all that sort of stuff. So, um, that is what the Remote Learning Academy does. There will be an official signup process. We have not started that. We need to have decided on what plan we are moving forward with before we engage in this. So stay tuned, but there will be a, a message coming out through, through Blackboard and and social media about that and how to sign up. If you, if that is of interest for you, and that might be of interest based on your feeling of safety, that might be of interest because your child has a health condition or someone in your household has a health condition, where being exposed could be, you know, a big issue for you and your family. So looking at, you know, this learning academy sort of, sort of piece, and this is from the middle school. But again, you've got, you know, period one, period two, period three. You can see that they are about no lesson hour. And again, this is middle school, we can go a little longer with them. Elementary school would probably be a little bit shorter. And again, that, if, we're looking at an instructional model that mirrors what actually happens in a classroom nowadays. What happens in a classroom nowadays is the teacher does not get up and sit there and talk in front of the room for hours at a time. They get up, they give, they, they give a lesson, it's a mini lesson, fifteen, twenty minutes long, depending what it is. And kids are put into groups and kids do individual work. And then they check in with the teacher and see how they're doing. And things are re-taught and checked. So that is going to be a similar sort of model. So you'll have instruction, students will be working independently, and they will be checking in. We have invested in an enhanced Google platform where students are going to be able to do small group meetings and that sort of thing right in Google Classroom. So you can see how that goes through. There's a lunch period and it rotates through. So it is pretty much the same sort of thing. Everybody, if, this is if we are staffing the, the, the remote academy. And on Wednesday, they would follow the same remote as we're doing throughout the, of the district. But they would have, they would have their own classes for these remote academy teachers. You see teacher lunches put in there, teacher PD banned as well. That's all those guidance that just came out for for banned chorus. That's going to be another piece to try to get into our programming. But you can see when you're looking at Wednesday, you're talking about half-hour blocks for the most part, and being able to check in with different teachers and progress monitor what, how the kids are doing. So students with significant special needs. And again, I've mentioned this before, but these, this again is a requirement by the state that students are in certain groups meet daily as required by the DSE. We are looking at either four or four and a half days a week, depending on what the disabilities are and what group they are in. So, you know, and I know that I've gotten several questions from parents about what that would look like. We will be reaching out to you to let you know if you are one of the people that would be in that. And we're actually required to offer in-person instruction for these students, no matter what mode we're in unless the governor closes all the schools. There are preschool considerations that we are looking at. Preschool, perhaps having less models because those students need to come in so that we can ensure we have the appropriate spacing. So extended day, this is one of the challenges. We have not really dug too far deep down onto this. But it's going to be very difficult to have an extended day bus. It's going to be a problem to take kids from different schools and move them to the savage. So we are looking at the possibility of having kids actually stay at their homeschool on those days when they are in-person. I am not sure that we can offer another option for those non-cohort groups, but that really has not been dug down at this point. The time, the end time might have to move up. And I say that because cleaning obviously is an important part of our safety protocols. And we need to make sure we have the staffing to do the cleaning. And if we're waiting for extended day to leave our elementary schools, that could be a problem. But again, that's an area that we're looking at. And again, there's still, again, a lot of details and challenges. We, we need to figure out a few other things before we do that. But the, the thought at this point in time is that we would not want to mix our extended day groups and mess up our cohorts. Okay, so needs for reopening, and again, these are estimated. So in order to do the hybrid model, we are approximately looking at a total teaching increase of eleven point eight, full-time equivalents, FTE. Seven of those will be at the elementary, three at the high school. Some of that would not necessarily be new positions, but elevating point sixes and point eights. Middle school, point six FTE, although that, that point six is the same point six that was in our Student Opportunities Act Plan. Special area subjects, and again, that's art, music, PE, those sorts of things, about one point two. And again, trying to keep the mixing between buildings down. Paraprofessionals, about seven point four FTE. And one thing that we've discussed that we want to do is we want to have technology integration coaches. And these actually might be staff members that are currently in our, in our, in our system, but elevate them and maybe, you know, hire a teacher to replace them for a year. But but to assist with the integration of technology and the using of tools, much like our, you know, awesome ELA coordinator and and math coordinator that we have at the elementary level. But these would be more, you know, district-wide. It is something we've talked about long-term, but with the, you know, the realistic probability or likelihood of having to go remote at some point for some period of time or to deeply be using technology, it probably is a good investment. Facilities, outdoors, the middle school, we need about three to five outdoor spaces. We cannot use the interior rooms at the middle school. So we are talking about possibly starting with tents, maybe moving to portables, depending on how long, and, you know, we stay in the hybrid model. The elementary is looking for outdoor classrooms. And again, maybe those are our tents, maybe one per building. And again, just to give a different learning space through the fall, get some fresh air, get some outdoors, be able to separate a little bit more out there. Some of those things we might be able to fit into one of our grants. And again, that's an area that we're going to be exploring. Okay, so the next steps, on or after the August tenth submission. So we are required by the department to submit a plan for August tenth. We are going to meet again as a school committee on August tenth. We're going to submit the plans to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We need to develop a Remote Learning Academy application and enrollment. Once we know enrollment and where it is, we need to figure out how we're going to staff that or or use one of the state contractors to provide that. Contacting high-needs students that will be receiving full in-person instruction. Staffing, looking at medical exemptions from persons doing in-person teaching and documenting and going through that process. Analysis of additional staffing and funding sources. So we're looking at additional staffing, that additional staffing, we are hopeful that some of that would be able to be funded through a second stimulus from the federal government. The ten days of training that was negotiated at the state, state level, what are those ten days? How are we going to arrange them? We have taught in, spoken in theory about moving convocation back. It doesn't do, I think people are concerned about protocols and how everything's going to work. Spending a little time on that first and getting that anxiety off of the table before we do some other things. And moving those back in those ten days is is probably a good idea. So we're going to be looking at a slightly new school calendar that doesn't affect families, except when the start day is. And I had mentioned before, it is somewhere around September sixteenth or seventeenth, depending on how we determine the the counting. So we will, we will come back to that. And of course, the extended day planning is another piece that we need to get moving on right after the tenth. General next steps, and necessarily, you know, maybe these are, these are ongoing, but maybe not the first things or the most important things. So we are continuing on a random of understanding discussions with the teachers' union. That is an important piece to that. Transportation planning and cost analysis. Continued work with the Board of Health and Segal Reach on our protocols, revising them as more information comes out. Solidifying our operation procedures. We have drafts at this point. We'd like our Board of Health to review those and go through those. With those scheduling, getting down to nitty-gritty scheduling. And of course, student placement and final schedules. So at this point, I'm making a recommendation to the school committee, two of them actually. First is the approval of the reopening plan of a hybrid plan, a hybrid model as presented, with the understanding that this is a fluid situation and changes of the, of the plan are likely. And we will continue that conversation going forward. My second recommendation is that we expand the use of face masks to include grades kindergarten and first grade, simply because that is obviously a concern we've heard from both staff and families. So at that point, if there are any questions, I will try to answer them. We do have the administrative team here with me, keep an eye on me to make sure that, you know, I'm on track, but also to help, help answer questions. Is there any slide that anyone wants me to go back to before I stop presenting? Saying none. All right, so I'm going to stop here.
Well, I think, wait, David, I think mine has made.
Okay. Oh, now I have to go back.
Sorry, I was having a horrible time unmuting. But, okay, I'm sorry, if you, I was just going to say, you didn't need to bring it up right this second. But I guess if you are bringing it up, I, I had questions about some of the schedules. I guess, I, I have questions about both the elementary schedule and the high school schedule. I don't know if you have a preference for which one we start with.
Why don't we, why don't we start with the, with the high school? And either maybe Cindy or people can jump on.
Okay, so at the high school schedule, cohort one, I see, you know, they go to periods one, two and three, four. I, I understand what they're doing Monday and Tuesday. What I'm, what I don't understand is what is cohort one doing on Thursday and Friday?
Hi, so I'm happy to answer that. So in this proposed hybrid schedule, what we really wanted to look at was giving each student, even if they're in the off cohort, the cohort that is at home, touch points in real-life synchronous learning with their teachers. So every afternoon, whether you are in-person that day or at home that day, all students in that class will be tuning in for two live synchronous remote learning classes. Also, for example, if, period one on Monday, but if I'm a student who's in cohort two and I'm at home, I will be given the tools that I need to be able to work on the work independently with support later on, so that the learning can remain as synchronous as possible. So basically, when you look at the schedule, it evens out so that each student every week has one in-person class with their teachers, two full synchronous remote classes with their teachers, and one class where they are at home but are given the tools that they need to kind of continue on at the same pace that their classmates who are in-person are doing.
So it's asynchronous learning only on, for cohort one, on Thursday and Friday mornings? And they would only have synchronous remote learning in the afternoons?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question about that. And then on the.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
I think Joan has a question on the high school.
I have a follow-up, I have a follow-up to your question, which is why I'm, what are the, can you talk to us about the staffing plan for this? So you've got, if they've got two in-person classes, tell us, can you tell us about that? What are the teachers doing during this, during, like, walk us through that?
So on a typical day, if I'm an English teacher, and the, and the way, you know, our schedule is loaded, teachers teach five out of the seven classes, right? So if I'm a full-time teacher, I have five sections out of seven possible periods. So students take seven, every teacher teaches five out of seven. So for example, on a Monday, I could teach two in-persons on period one and two. I have two classes, period three could be my prep. Period four, I have another in-person class. Then I have my lunch when my students are dismissed for their grab-and-go lunch. I attend a brief, um, remote virtual department meeting till about one o'clock. And then I teach a period seven online class with all my students who are in period seven, regardless of which cohort they are in. And then from one forty-five to two thirty, I would host virtual office hours where I'd be available to answer questions for any of my students. And you can see in the afternoon, for each day, the schedule is arranged as such so that you're not duplicating the same classes. What we wanted to avoid was, you know, people feeling like they had to repeat lessons for for other students. Because if you repeat, i- if you essentially split the cohorts in half and do one thing on Monday and Tuesday with one cohort and then do the same exact thing with the other cohort on Thursday and Friday, you're only going to do half as much of the stuff. So we felt like it was important to keep this as, uh, as true to a real in-school experience as we could, and also be able to move fluidly between models if needed. So the schedule could stay in place in a full remote model if we had, if the whole school had to move from a hybrid to a remote session. You know, you could pick up the next day and follow the schedule remotely.
So a teacher is teaching across all of the cohorts?
Correct.
Have we gotten way in from the Board of Health about that?
Dr. Thompson, I'll let you take that one.
Have we, um, yeah, it's, it's going to happen. It's, it's, it's the best we can do.
Wait, but my, but that's separate from whether or not that's recommended public health strategy. What we can do and what is recommended public health strategy are two different things, right? More maybe two different.
Well, we're also, we're also doing it at the elementary school and we have teachers moving in and around teams, so, you know.
And I will ask the same question of the elementary. And I will ask the same question of the elementary school principals. But my question is, has, has Segal reviewed the staffing plan for these hybrid proposals?
Yes, we have talked about people moving in and out of classrooms. She's, you know, if we, if that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. I don't know, Teresa, if you agree with that?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I talked to Segal often, including this afternoon. So Segal's a big thing, which is just the public health strategy, is you wanna, you wanna move people the least amount needed, right? And it's much easier to move one teacher, whether it is the high school or middle school model, from, you know, it, with one group of kids in period one to another group in period two or at the elementary model, which we'll talk about with the elementary team soon, of a teacher having a cohort on Monday, Tuesday, and that same teacher having another cohort on Thursday, Friday. So it's much easier, I'm not necessarily going to say safer, because I don't want to make that determination and, and all of this, but you can mitigate risk more by having that one teacher move. What Segal has been very clear about is she wants us to limit the movement of students.
Okay, so this isn't a trick question. This is literally a yes or no question. Has Segal reviewed the proposed staffing plan?
Yes.
Thank you. That was really literally just my question, like.
Okay, I thought you were asking what she's saying about the teacher moving.
Has she, has she reviewed the protocols? She has, and she's given you that guidance. That was really, this, I wasn't trying to trip anyone up. I was really just asking, like, oh, it, where this was, our, our Board of Health has reviewed this. This is being done in collaboration. That's what I was asking.
Right, yeah.
Were there other, yeah, Maya?
So with the, each class being divided into two cohorts, you know, the, you know, the period one class that's being taught is divided into, is divided into two cohorts. How many students do we think we can service in a class and, and still maintain the social distancing?
In an in-person class?
Yes.
With the distance of six feet, it's 10 in every classroom and 12 in most.
Okay. And so are we able to, if we limit our classes to 20 to 24 students, do we think that we can schedule them into the classes they want?
That is the million dollar question. And that is the, Mrs. Durain, who is here, is the wizard of scheduling. But I will say that this is a process in normal circumstances. The, the master schedule of a high school drives everything that happens in a high school, every single thing. And the beauty of it is the complexity of it in that students actually get to choose the classes that they want to take for the most part. And as students get older, that variety increases. So at the high school, to truly isolate a group of 20 students would be taking away that very experience. So we don't have this plan. Lesson, it lowers the number of transitions that students have. It does not eliminate transitions that students have. It cuts in half the number of students in a class, but teachers still will work with multiple classes. It mitigates the risk, it does not eliminate risk, right? But the, the schedule right now, as I said, in most years, that master schedule process really starts in March and is tweaked all the way up until August. And the bulk of that work being done, I would say, from early May to, through July. So you're taking something that is done in about three months and we're totally redoing it, put an entirely new master schedule, where you're essentially splitting the school into two different schools, loading those kids into different classes and building those schedules again, capping each class at 10 or 12 and loading it that way. So it's a very complicated process. And always, just when you think you have it, there's something else that you don't. And there are, in any year, there are choices that students have to make where, you know, we typically, Mrs. Durain does a wonderful job and students get about 95% of course requests met. And that's outstanding. And, and we're, we're looking at that again, but it's going to take some time to work through all that. And what really needs to, what we need to know to do that, to do that to the level that we need to do that is exactly which students are going to elect full remote. You know, because once we, once we know that, we reorganize. Right now, we have kind of a skeleton of it and it's a good one, but it's gonna, that, that in and out of, of one student in a class makes a difference of whether we can actually fit them safely in a class, right? So, so I know that's a long-winded answer to the question, but that is in process and we are confident we can, can schedule it, but it's, it's a complicated process.
Were there other questions on this high school model, since we have it before us again from the committee? Or additional information, Dr. Galligan and Mr. Durain, that you wanted to add about the process or challenges regarding your counting or anything you think we should know? Yeah, Joan?
I have a question, if you could outline the, the online classes in the afternoon. So you're saying, you're saying those are synchronous. I just want to check to make sure I understand. So that would be, the teacher is working with the students, whether that's they're doing independent work on their own, but the teacher's available to them? Or the teacher is doing a mini lesson, as Dr. Thompson was talking before? Can you just talk a little bit about what that's, what a typical synchronous online session would look like?
Yeah, and so this is the big shift from what students and families would have experienced in the spring to what they would experience in the fall, either in a remote or a hybrid model, right? Because even in this hybrid proposal, a student experience at the high school is still mostly remote. Most of your class meetings actually happen remotely. So the remote piece of the teaching and learning is, is really where the focus needs to be. But in that afternoon class and, and on Wednesdays for the full day, students and teachers will be live online together. So the mini lesson will be taught, questions will be happening in live time. Discussions can happen in live time via Google Meet. The enhanced version of Google Meet can allow for breakout groups and things like that. So we want our staff to be able to get familiar with that new technology that they'll have, that will be able to enhance it. Whereas in the springtime, that happened during our office hours where, but it wasn't mandatory. It, it was mandatory that staff were available during that time, but it wasn't mandatory for students. So, you know, the attendance would, would be a key piece of this and to be able to replicate as close as possible in a remote environment, the, the in-person live experience, right? And I'll mention just one other change that happens here for the most part. We're looking at, to, to make the, the numbers work. And because it's a sound instructional practice in a lot of ways, is the merging of honors and college prep classes in some way, in many classes, to be able to differentiate instruction, keep the numbers balanced. Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Galligan and Mr. Durain, can you talk a little bit more? I know you just said the merger of the college prep and the honors. Are there certain challenges with other levels of classes? I, I know there were some questions that the school committee had sent out through Dr. Thompson ahead of time around like the AP course offering. Could you talk a little bit more about what we're concerned there?
Not a concern. I would say that one of the reasons that we went with this type of model is that it maintains the integrity of our schedule and that courses are year-long. We entertained some models where courses would be semesterized, where you might have four classes first semester and two, and four classes second semester or something along those lines. And that would have had a tremendous impact on the way AP classes run, because if you could take an AP class, it would be done at the end of January and take your AP exam in, in May. So that was one of the reasons why ultimately we decided not to move forward with a proposal of a model like that. The other challenge, I think, as Mrs. Durain could attest to, is that many AP classes are what we refer to as singletons. So, right, if you have 10 sections of the same class, it's easy for kids to get that class. If you have one, it is not, because it has to fit, the puzzle pieces have to fit. So some AP classes are singletons, and that could either mean they are bigger or it could mean that some students may not get their choice there. Or it could mean that you just have to troubleshoot on an individual level, which is what typically happens during that second half of the summer is everybody's tweaking individual schedules to try and get that course request met number up, so that, you know, if a student requested these courses, we really put a lot into that and try to, try to meet those requests.
Thank you. Yeah, Maya?
Dr. Galligan, I see that you've requested or you're suggesting perhaps three additional high school teachers, and I don't know if any of the paraprofessionals would be at the high school level. Can you talk about why there's a need for those teachers?
So that's an estimate now, and we won't know the exact number until we have the information that, you know, I mentioned before, exactly how many students would be all remote and where we'll be short in this. So when you're rebuilding the master schedule like we are, there will likely be content areas in which we are short. So for example, you may notice like, hey, we weren't able to satisfy enough course requests in math. We need a math teacher, for example. We also know that there's going to be a need for general classroom support, case management, co-teaching in some ways, EL support and special education support. So while that's definitely an estimate at this time and we'll not know those numbers until the true master schedule is, is done. That's, those are our intentions there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Joan?
With regards to the APs and the singletons, has there been any exploration as to whether or not students could do those in a remote fashion? So if we've got a small cohort, say we've got five students who want to take AP Calc B or something like that, there are providers out there that allow that? Has, has that option been discussed or explored at all?
In a remote fashion, not taught by nor at high school staff, is that?
That is what I'm, yes, third rail of, of teachers' union aside. And I, I understand the contract, I know the contract, but I'm, I'm wondering if that is an option logistically?
Yeah, I, I think logistically it could absolutely be an option that, that we would talk about. And it has, in the past, for example, we've used online education coursework sometime, in some cases, where students, for whatever reason, couldn't have a certain course. So that, that could be something very well that could be explored. And as you mentioned, it would likely be something that would have to be negotiated to a certain degree. But that, that is the benefit of some of those online providers is that, you know, if you have a couple of kids that can't take it for whatever reason, they might be able to take it in a different way.
Other questions about the high school? I know Maya had questions around the elementary schedule. Is the committee okay to shift to the elementary at this point? Yeah, Joan?
Sorry, I just had one other question. When Dr. Thompson was talking about high school programming, I encompassed that to me. Does that, does that include clubs? Are we talking about clubs? Are we talking about the extra tutoring that we do, all of the things that typically take place? I don't know whether or not to call this co-curricular or extracurricular. Everything but not sports and fine arts. Are we, is there a plan for that or have we not gotten there yet?
So when we talked about programming, we really talked about our academic programming, meaning electives, which is a really important part of the high school experience. We didn't want to prioritize one content area over another content area or focus only on core subjects, because we think that takes away from the, the value of a well-rounded high school experience. So this honors not only physics and health, but all music and fine arts and graphic arts courses and our healthcare pathway and all of that, it maintains the, those programs. Now, with clubs, I think we're going to get likely some guidance there. There are opportu, we want to, when we can safely do so, and however we can safely do so, we want to honor all those. And I, I think, you know, we consider clubs, athletics and fine arts under the same umbrella, because they're three of the forays, right? So if we can, we, we want to keep as many of those intact as possible, as long as it's safe to do so.
So Maya, do you want to ask the questions that you had on the elementary schedule? And Dr. Thompson, can you go back to that screen?
Yep.
Yeah, my question was just about, like, the in-person cohort would be starting with a, a Google Meet? And I was just trying to understand, like, what are we expecting about the use of technology during the day? And.
So I just want to, so this schedule that is before you is, is, is a little bit misinterpreted. This, what we gave at the, as the schedule was actually the three days remote in the hybrid in a possible frame for a remote learning academy. So, so the top, top two categories really should say synchronous and asynchronous, which simply means synchronous is when you're live in a meeting with your teacher in real time. Asynchronous just means that your teacher has assigned you some work or, and/or a video or a presentation that you can view independently at home on your own. So the frame, and we will fix this on the PowerPoint and we will get more of an in-person day, if people want to see that. What we're contending with at the elementary level is trying to create that in-person schedule that will be very, very similar to what students would have experienced in a live day anyways. But what we're working around is what our new special schedule is. What we're trying to do is because they are coming two days live, three days remote, trying to get as many live specials for them as we can. For example, PE on their in-person day, as opposed to always getting PE remotely. Or, you know, mus, you know, so you get that, so we're trying to figure through that stuff. So we didn't put up our in-person schedule for you. So all students will either be co-horted in a blue group, which will come, just like the other levels, Monday, Tuesday, full in-person to our elementary schools. They will start their school day, coming in most likely in most of our buildings and stagger doors all over the building in special ways that we get them in the building safely. And they will go through their day pretty similarly, except instead of leaving their classroom to go through their day, they'll be in their classrooms and teachers will come and visit them. And then this schedule here, what you're seeing is actually truly the hybrid model. So when they are home and remote, they will have a morning meeting. So, okay, and that will be synchronous, which means live with your teacher, face-to-face, in-person. What you don't see, and it's simply just because of the limitation of the slide size, is the explanation that's at the top of it. So basically, we, we, what we gave is a sample of what your child will experience throughout the various components of their remote learning day. On the three days of the hybrid model, when students are at home, this schedule could also be utilized in the remote learning academy. And then the loose frame of the day is students will be engaged in learning from nine to 11:30. They will have a midday break, 11:30 to 12:30, and they will come back on again, 12:30 to 2:30. And the two, those frames are with teachers, okay, with their remote learning, except for that hour break. Now, within the nine thirty to, nine to 11:30, and then 12 to 2:30, there will be live teacher meetings and also independent and come back and meet. Because we have a, we bought a more enhanced Google Meet, so we can create rooms and we can have kids hop in and hop out. We can do small group instruction. We can do things like station rotation, which will be done in a remote online platform. All of the technology, our major plan for September and October, particularly, well, not close to October, but is to really embed technology in their live days. We are going to really set them up for success at home with the technology pieces by providing direct instruction in the Google Classroom platform, how to access all the things that we use, how to, how to access the math online, the MyView online, everything they will need to do. Part of our new ELA program also comes with a long-term project or a, a project that we also are now implementing in both live and we will do in the remote environment as well. So that, we are hoping for two things. More students feeling stronger with the technology, so that they can be a little bit more independent at home. so that they can be a little bit more independent at home, but also the teachers will have a very robust live experience with kids in multiple formats, whole group, small group, things like that.
Okay, thank you. That helps me understand this, these slides.
Okay. Joan?
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's been a lot of information coming at us, and I'm I'm not able to follow what's going on now with these changes. Um, Dr. Thompson, can you flip it back to the slide before? So what you're saying is that this is, I'm sorry, I just need to check this because this is not my preferred learning style.
This whole schedule is for remote. So that, so so like, so your kids, if they're in the blue cohort, let's say their last, say we start a cohort alphabetically, A through L, just loosely, okay? So they come to school live Monday, Tuesday. This is not their schedule.
Right, okay, so.
But then they're home Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. This is how their day will be designed.
Okay, so when my kids are home on Wednesday, I I guess where I'm getting confused in is the night, how does the in-person and the remote fit into that nine to eleven thirty block? Could you walk me through a nine through eleven thirty block?
So, for example.
And tell me kind of what I'd expect if they were home.
Yep, so basically nine o'clock, um, this, the teacher's gonna go online. The kid's gonna have the schedule and know how to get into the meet. She's gonna take attendance, and she is going to have a morning meeting with them. The morning meeting is gonna encompass something that's probably SEL-related or social-emotional-related, um, building connection, building community, and just planning out the day, talking about what their agenda is going to look like today. Um, once that breaks up, they're gonna go directly. And again, we loosely put this schedule, it's gonna be what works best in the remote environment. Right now, we have ELA so many minutes. This doesn't necessarily mean that ELA is next. She might decide after working with them that they're better with math in the morning, so just so you know that. So then the whole group goes and gets a lesson, a whole gla- class lesson in ELA. Now, what's changed for us is I don't, early on in our dialogue about hybrid, we had planned for about three or four weeks, week A and week B. And then we changed course a little bit, and we decided that we were gonna do two days in, three days out. So the moving of the curriculum shifted for us. So now, if you can kind of look at it as Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the curriculum is going to be very similar, whether you're live or remote. We're moving forward with the curriculum. So it's not like they're only getting a progression in the curriculum Monday, Tuesday, and practicing Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The teacher who is doing the remote is moving them. So when they come back Monday, they don't start where they left off Tuesday.
Okay. Okay, that that helps. Um, I think where I'm getting thrown here is you've got ELA instruction, and just, we can just call that content instruction, because I understand that it might be math, whatever. We've got participate in scheduled live direct whole group instruction for twenty to thirty minutes, participate in small group live direct instruction for twenty, thirty minutes. That part I understand, but I don't understand the completing the assignments, pre-recorded ass- assigned videos.
So when you look at the top titles, if you can think of with the teacher and independent, that's what they're, that's what they should say. They should not say in-person or remote. The top two titles should be synchronous with the teacher, and the other side is independent. So just like in the gen ed classroom, just in the cla- like in the live classroom, once teachers deliver a short whole group lesson, students break. And she starts to see people at their levels and what they need in small group. Meanwhile, there's other work, whether it's in a rotation model or a packet or whatever, that is assigned to the group who's absent of the teacher in front of them. That's what we are anticipating in the remote environment as well.
Okay, so let me see if I if I got this, because again, I apologize for, this is not how I learn best. Um, if, so out of that ninety minutes, right, you've got in this, I see that it says this, but out of the ninety minutes, they'll be starting off with a whole group lesson for twenty to thirty minutes. Um, and then they'll be doing their independent work where they may be checking in with the teacher, may not be checking in with the teacher, and then coming back, and then spending at least twenty minutes or so with a small group with the teacher within that ninety minutes. Am I finally getting it?
Yes, so even, and within that thirty minutes of the small group, it could be ten minutes with this group, ten minutes with this group, and ten minutes with that group.
Which is basically, right, which is basically what it looks like in the regular classroom.
Exactly.
Right.
We're trying to mimic the school day as much as reasonable with a, yes.
I I learned best through written, so I can hear everything that you're saying, but I need to process it and push it back. Thank you.
And I think, Joan, one of the differences also to highlight there is, I think in the in the spring, you know, the the time between te- teacher and student contacts was a little bit longer. Um, and here it's going to be, you know, okay, Johnny, I will see you in twenty-five minutes, and that teacher is gonna be checking in with Johnny in twenty-five minutes to see, did you do these two things? Um, if there was a slide that might happen of Johnny missing that one assignment, it's gonna be much less than it was in the spring when we said, oh, my goodness, Johnny, you haven't done two days worth of stuff or three days worth of stuff. Um, it's gonna be much more beneficial when the teacher is there and say, okay, let, I'll circle back with you later um when we have some time to get that done. So the opportunity for kids to fall behind in the remote environment, we are hoping is gonna be severely limited because of the amount of contacts that the teacher will have with the student on a daily basis.
And it looks like from the schedule that folks, that the teachers will be working with them synchronously on the remote days at least four or five times a day on different subjects.
The teacher really only gets that hour break in the middle.
Okay, okay, that, all right, I was, I was, yeah, I was getting confused. Okay, I got, I I got the schedule now, thank you.
But just quickly, I I think I had, I'm just clarifying. This is the three days in the hybrid model that children are remote learning.
Yes.
Does this change in any capacity? I think the answer is no, but I just want to be clear, on Wednesdays, when everybody is remote.
It could, because, but not right away. So what we, uh, best practices would be that when all three teachers are available to do remote learning, we're gonna capitalize on that as we get further in the content, November, December. One teacher is gonna be, I'm taking the intervention group. We're gonna, you know, another teacher might be the above grade and on. There are many ways that they can decide and collaborate as a team of teachers how they're working with the students on Wednesday.
Okay.
And then there'll be much more independent work for the afternoon. There'll be less teacher time on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, and this model is really dependent on funding and staffing in that you're, and incorrect if I'm wrong, but you you need three teachers per grade at each school?
At a minimum, yes.
Yeah.
And that's where the request for seven elementary teachers are coming in, correct?
Yeah, there are a few schools that only have two great, two classes at a specific grade level, and that's where that happens, yep.
So I know the Callahan, fourth and fifth grade, you only have two teachers. So I'm assuming that's an area of need. Um, Oldham, I know you have two teachers somewhere, I'm just not remembering off the top of my head. Could you just run us through, so everybody knows like where we think the teacher needs are?
Yes, and we have two teachers in first grade and two teachers in fourth grade at the Oldham. We need to have a first and a fourth grade person to help.
First and fourth?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, Prescott, Brian, do you have a need for a teacher?
Yeah, so mine will be second and fifth.
Okay. Donna, was I right? It's fourth and fifth at Callahan?
So next year is third and fifth.
Third and fifth, okay. Oh, yes, because that cohort of kids is your large cohort, I remember.
Correct.
That's where we added the teacher a couple of years ago. Um, Diane, do you have needs of the vault?
No, because we have um three and four classes, three and one class has four, so we'll be fine. And I believe Nancy's in the same situation, um, but I don't want to speak for her totally, just in case.
I am in the same situation.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, trying to do vacation at the same time. Yeah, I have three and four as well. So I've got plenty of coverage. Um, in terms of that, it's just the Remote Academy that I wouldn't have any help with.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Mya, I know you have some questions.
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Ferrer kind of um led into this, and and this discussion about the staffing. I just want, I'm not sure everybody understood how this would work. At the high school, it's clear we were talking about, you know, a student would have their one math teacher and that they would see that math teacher for one in-person class and then for their remote classes. Um, the, and that, um, but it, the model at the elementary school is very different with, and there is a plan for team teaching, and I wonder if somebody could just take us through that.
Um, for a different voice, I could have Brian do it or somebody else, um, or I I'm happy to keep rolling. But yeah, Brian, why don't you take it?
Yeah, so at the elementary level, what we're looking at is um essentially at every grade level having a minimum of three classroom teachers. So if you think about it as a student and a family will have an in-person teacher, and they'll have a remote teacher. So rather than being assigned a a self-contained, here's my gen ed teacher that I'm with all day, they will have a, here's my in-person teacher, here's my remote teacher. That remote teacher is gonna be the same for both cohorts, right? So say, for example, second grade, um, Johnny may have uh Miss Mrs. Smith for her, is in-person um instruction earlier in the week, and then um Mr. Jones for remote. Every kid in that grade is going to have Mr. Jones for remote, right? So Mr. Jones is the remote teacher. Um, and so over the course of that grade, you will have two teachers who are going to be there teaching the in-person and one who's gonna be there teaching the remote. Um, and so the benefit of that is that you're gonna have a teacher who is not gonna, or gonna have all teachers that aren't gonna have to go in between those different things, right? Um, that aren't gonna have to be trying to teach in-person and go in remote or trying to navigate different platforms. Um, so the remote teacher is gonna be solely focused on the kids that are learning at home, which is why it frees up some time during the day for them to actually have touch points with kids. Um, so take, for example, my, just at my third grade sections now, I have three of them. In this model, hypothetically, two of them will be in-person teachers, and one of them will be the remote teacher for the entire third grade. Um, so while they're at home, again, you're looking at that team of third graders. The kids will get a in-person teacher assignment, and then they will have their remote teacher for um the entire third grade. That would be the model that would carry across elementary schools. So it gives us the opportunity for those teachers that are doing some remote teaching to really refine their practice, hopefully with um some of these remote coaches that we're asking for, um, and also just solely focus on that. The same goes for in-person. Um, like, like someone asked, well, what does that Wednesday look like? Um, we're really looking at as we roll this out and get comfortable in this model, really looking at that Wednesday as a team teaching day. So like Diane said, it might be something like um leveled groups, it might be book studies, it might be content areas. I'm gonna teach social studies remote today, I'm gonna teach science remote. Um, and so those two in-person teachers will kind of float to remote for that one day um with the support and collaboration of the person who is um the full-time remote teacher.
So in terms of numbers, so say you have a class of, you have two classes of twenty-four students each, right, in general, but you're gonna be, they're gonna be divided into cohorts, right? So twelve kids in Mrs., you know, Mrs. Smith's class will come in, and um twelve kids in another class will be in, and then Mrs. Jones would be a working remotely with twenty-four kids?
Twenty-four kids, yep.
Okay.
Yep, and we feel like for the most part at the elementary level, those numbers right now are okay. Um, looking at having twenty-four kids remotely, we did do it in the spring, but we also feel like we've made a lot of progress just in the Google suite with the ability to do breakouts. Um, we will also, I think it's, it's important to, like, like Diane had mentioned before, we're gonna have hopefully the face-to-face with kids to really get them comfortable and scaffold them up to um to to using the technology. In the spring, it was, here's your device, and then we kind of have to coach technology through the technology, right? Um, and so this is much more of sort of a driver's ed, right? Like, we're in the driver's seat with them, um, and, you know, not that I'd want to do that, um, but, you know, we're gonna be in the, in the classroom with them when they're in school saying, oh, okay, see this error message you just got in Pearson here, how you fix it? Um, and really allow kids to gain some comfort with support and a gradual release with technology. Um, and I think our summer work teams are preparing for that work now, right? We're sketching out a scope and sequence of technology supports that our kids and teachers are going to need for the fall. So we feel like we're gonna be in a much better place with that, um, that our kids are gonna be a little more comfortable in that regard, and so those class numbers aren't gonna be as high in the remote setting.
And within the daily schedule and the live, um, because the class sizes will be so much smaller um in this, in the student population will be divided, there will also be opportunity, we hope, for support staff to pull some small group in remote as well. They'll be doing it um live, but they'll also potentially have time in their schedules to support some of our ELL, some of our title one, you know, those those kids as well.
Okay, thank you.
Joan?
Um, the the, that, Ms. Ferrer just started to getting, getting into it. Um, but, no, 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 in a good way. It's, meaning it was a good segue. Um, I, my questions were really around um the the students who get reading instruction, students who get pulled out for um speech therapy, all of our students who get specialized accommodations, but also the folks on five oh four plans. Um, how are you handling that both in-person and what's the plan for remote?
So in term of, in terms of five oh four plans, everybody who ta- who sees the NIPs, both, everyone who works with a student has a copy and knows the goals and all of that. Um, and Lori's here too to answer that, but um, yeah, so all the people who interact with the student, you know, pulling out a lot, there'll probably be a lot of um support within the class, um, different things like that. But um Lori's here to speak to special ed if you have a question that way. But um everyone, you know, five oh four plans, it's the gen ed, it's a gen ed accommodation is what five oh four typically is, and, you know, we make the accommodations in both the remote environment or the live environment.
What about the folks who um go see a reading specialist? So not five oh fours, but folks who've been identified, kid, I I keep saying folks, but I'm I'm really talking about kindergarten through sixth graders who are, you know, getting extra help with um reading or getting extra help around math or who have, you know, it's, it's not at the special ed level, but we, they do need extra support to to succeed.
Yeah, I think, I, they typically get pulled out, so.
And and that might be something where um where the reading specialist looks at the group of kids that they're going to work with and say, sort of, does it make more sense over the course of the week to really target those kids when they're in-person or when they're at home? I'm thinking specifically at first grade, right? So first grade, if that reading specialist typically sees that group two, three, four times, that reading specialist may say, I really need to see them when they're in the building. And again, you know, it might be on a hangout in their classroom in a, in a kind of weird situation, but at least be able to say, like, let me queue them up for our work later in the week, where if it's a fourth or fifth grader and a reading specialist is seeing them, they may say, I feel really comfortable seeing that group remotely, where we may read a text, talk about it, get some coaching. Um, and I think that's really where, you know, our reading specialist as content experts will look at the individual kids and sort of say, okay, for this group, what makes sense for them? But I think hopefully what's what's coming across is when the kids are at home, it's not a, you know, you're flying without a net, right? We're gonna have reading specialists, special educators, ELL teachers, who are also gonna have touch points with the kids who are learning at home. Um, and again, that's really gonna be dependent on who the kid is um and where their IEP dictates support, how it dictates support. Um, and so once we have an idea, you know, and I think that um Hugh said earlier, once we have idea of what kids we're gonna have in the seats as part of our hybrid model, um, this will really start to become more clear as to sort of where we can navigate um within that.
Support, yeah. Um, at some point, I'd like to be able to offer a few um pieces of information about kindergarten if I could have a moment to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. I do have some kindergarten questions for you. I I just want to clarify one more thing with the one through five, if you don't mind. And I think Emery also has a question, um, but go ahead, Emery.
Okay, uh, I just want to make sure that given this, you know, um, split between in-person teaching and remote teachers, that there is some time in the day um being scheduled for those teachers to communicate about what's going on in the classroom. I I do worry about the um the disconnect between a teacher that's going a hundred percent remote with the kids and um communicating with the teacher that's in-person with, you know, what's working, what's not, you know, who's behind, who needs extra help and things like that, and just want to make sure that's actually being scheduled into the days.
Mostly on Wednesdays, to be honest with you right now, um, and depending on some MOU dialogue, we'll see where teachers will be um t- working, how how that will work, and if we can figure out how to get the collaboration um in-person. And I think um with Kathy Conabon working with our schedules, she is embedding some common planning time. Um, so, yeah, remains to be seen.
We 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 know that that's critical, that in order for kids to be successful in both environments, we really need to approach this as a sort of middle school team model, right? Um, and so we need to know if a kid is doing really well in-person but not engaging in the remote environment, we need to take the opportunity when they're at school to maybe have a conversation with them, figure out what's going on, and the same thing happens, that maybe the kid thrives at home, but at school, they're not coming to school or there's an issue. And so we, we're approaching this, and we'll put structures in place where the conversations and the collaboration around- where the conversations and the collaboration around, and the conversations are really around the kids and how to provide them the support that they need. But this, yeah, this, this hybrid plan can't work if the teachers that are at, at, teaching at home and teaching in-person are not having good conversations around kids' progress.
Yeah, and I just, you know, I just want to make sure too, because I worry about, at least the younger grades. I think as they get older, you're going to, you know, get them more prepared for multiple teachers at the middle school anyway, but especially at the younger grades, they might, you know, used to the teaching style of one teacher in-person, and they have a completely different teaching style for their remote teacher. And so I just really worry, and just hope that that will, you know, be collaborative enough to, you know, try to standardize maybe a little bit the teaching methods across that whole first grade. I know the teachers can have widely, vastly different teaching styles, so.
Yeah. I, I just want to clarify something. And again, I think I know the answer, but I think it's really important that everybody understands this. It's clear, first of all, there's a lot of work that has gone into this hybrid model, and a lot of really creative ways to make everything happen for our children in this type of model. But this model is heavily contingent upon hiring seven teachers. And funding is up in the air. And I know Dr. Thompson, in the beginning of this presentation, you gave the disclaimer that all of this could continue to change due to funding and other aspects. But if it turns out that we don't have the funding, and we can't hire the elementary teachers to have this wonderful teen model, where does that leave us? Is there a Plan B, or does that then mean the hybrid model for one through five is not an option for Norwood Public Schools?
This actually is the less expensive of two hybrid models that we looked at, and includes less staffing than the original model, which was to have a teacher with an assistant, basically.
So I agree with that, but the question is still, if, if, for whatever reason, the funding is not there and we cannot do this, does that mean that the hybrid model for grades one through five in Norwood Public Schools cannot happen?
Probably one through 12 cannot happen, right? Yep, yep.
Okay. Any other questions for one through five before we talk about kindergarten? Because I do think it's very important that we do that as well. No, okay. Oh, sorry, did somebody say they do? No, okay.
No, I think I said, "thank you."
Oh, I thought you said, "they do," but I didn't know who said, "I do."
Prior to Carolyn talking about kindergarten, I don't have a kindergarten slide. Do we, do we all have the slides? I was just going to stop sharing that.
I think so. So Ms. Robbins, if you could share more thoughts about the proposed kindergarten model and what the days might look like, both home and in-school in the hybrid model? I think that would be really helpful.
Sure. So we, in terms of cohorting kids, we will be in alignment with one through five. We will also have a blue and gold cohort, which will allow us to cohort siblings with the, with the one-through-five schools and whatnot. The thing that's different for how we would like to roll out is where they're doing that model where they're grouping and having two in-person teachers and a remote teacher. We actually can set it up at our school where we have, the children are with the same teacher for their in-school and their remote. So if they have Mrs. Smith, they're coming on Monday and Tuesday for in-person with Mrs. Smith, and then on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Mrs. Smith is doing her, their remote instruction as well. And the way that we can accomplish this is, and why it didn't work out to be able to do it that way at the elementary school, at the one-through-five level, is because we have instructional aides in all of our classrooms in kindergarten. And so if you can imagine half of the school coming on each of those cohort days, and so we would have six full classes in school on Monday and Tuesday. Each class would be spread into two physical classrooms, and we're working hard to make sure that those two physical classrooms are connected by a door, so that they can leave that door open. And the teacher will rotate between the two rooms, which, again, are just side-by-side, basically carrying out all of the instruction. Teacher is still responsible for planning and instruction and, and teaching both groups of those kids. And in the meantime, the aide will be providing instructional support to the room that the teacher is not in. So again, it would look similar to like what they were talking about when we were talking about the remote model, how the teacher might teach the mini lesson of, let's say it's a math lesson, they're going to teach the solvent chair, and how do you solve this problem? And then the aide will then sit with the kids as they're doing practice problems and supporting that, that type of learning that goes on with the practice. And then she would flip and flop and kind of go back and forth. We have, all of our kindergarten teacher and paraprofessional teams, or most, I should say, have been partnered together for a long time and have been doing this kind of teaching for quite some time, and, and are very sort of well-oiled machines when it comes to supporting student instruction in that way. So we have it worked out to do that. And then that actually does not require any additional staffing at the Willett to be able to do that. If we were to try to do the one-through-five model, we wouldn't need additional staffing, because the way that the numbers work for us, we would have, like, and if I tried to do it with existing staffing, I would have one teacher responsible for 66 kids worth of remote learning in kindergarten, which is just untenable. So, so that's why we opted to diverge slightly from, from one through five and try to do a different, a different, slightly different model. And also, I think, you know, there are, there are inherent challenges to being remote at all with five-year-olds. It really, and I say five-year-olds because those are my charge, but really pre-K to two, I think, pre-K to second grade, there are some real challenges with being remote with, with young children in that it requires a lot more adult support. And so as we're thinking through what the remote day might look like for kindergarten, we are trying to think of, not just that we need to be checking in live with children at certain times of day, but also trying to realize and recognize that there are families at home for which that is going to be very difficult and very challenging, if not impossible. So we are really straddling that, that, that divide of, of what's realistic and what's workable for families, and what makes educational sense for young children. So when we get that slide corrected in the, in the presentation where it talks about remote learning and what the remote learning day looks like, I would just caution parents who might be looking at that. I did put on the actual document that we shared with Dr. Thompson. At the bottom, there's a little asterisk that says, for kindergarten, this will be adapted and adjusted based on the developmental needs of the kids. So it may not be that it's a, you know, it's a full six-hour day when you're remote, because the reality of time on learning in kindergarten is not that we're doing six hours of, well, we only have a five-and-a-half hour day, but we're not doing a five-and-a-half hours of time on learning. We're doing, you know, maybe three hours of academic instruction, and then we have lots of recess, that's because that's needed, you know, lunch, playtime. You know, we can sort of deduct that in kindergarten from our quote-unquote "time on learning", which might bring us our remote date to more of like a three-hour day as opposed to a full, you know, five or six hours at home, trying to manage that, you know. And, you know, I certainly want to acknowledge, you know, I've been getting a lot of emails from parents as well, just wondering, you know, what, what is the remote experience for kindergarteners? And what does that mean for us? And, you know, what's, what's the amount of screen time that they're going to have? And are they just going to be on a computer screen all day? And how do we manage that while trying to work our 40-hour-week job? You know, all of that. But, you know, the one thing that we are also going to be trying to do is embed some hands-on learning into those remote learning days. So we, my little kindergarten curriculum group is talking about creating at-home learning kits so that when they go home from their in-person day, they walk, they go home with a little, you know, kit of math manipulatives and, you know, write and wipe type activities that they can do. So it's not so much just staring at a screen and trying to type things into a computer that just doesn't make a whole lot of sense for kindergarten. So that's what, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Again, we still have a lot of work to do, just like everybody else in terms of ironing out all the details, but that's what we're thinking for kindergarten.
Thank you, Carolyn. Are there questions on, I know it's a lot that you just shared with us, but initial reaction questions from the committee on that proposed K model? No?
Okay. And then just to offer up for preschool too, just because, again, that's my, my area. We are plan, we are not planning to do a hybrid for preschool. The DESI guidance for special education that came out on July 20, July 9th really emphasized that we should be prioritizing in-person learning for our preschool students. So we are going to move forward with a fully in-person model for preschool. One, some of the questions that we still have about preschool are, will we have to, or can we reduce some of our peers in order to make the class sizes a little bit more manageable? But that's still a big question mark, so I don't want to say anything, you know, definitive about that. But they will be coming full in-person for preschool as of right now. Although I will say that students on IEPs in preschool, if a parent is not comfortable sending their child in, or if the child has a medical need, they will have the option of having a remote option as well.
Thank you. When you say full preschool, it's the full schedule, whichever they were, well, sorry. The peer models, I know, can choose different formatting. The children who enrolled special needs, is it always four days? Can you remind me? I'm forgetting.
No, so we have multiple, multiple schedules that happen at the, at the preschool, and it's always a little confusing to try to explain. But we have some kids who come two days a week, we have some kids who come three days a week, and this is special education students and peers. So we have different configurations for both. And we try to match up those cohorts though. So we have two-day peers, we have two-day special education friends. So basically, what we're proposing is pretty much operate as usual, so like as we normally would. So if a child was supposed to have two days of preschool, whether they're on an IEP or they were signed up as a peer, that's what we're going, and it's two half-days oftentimes. When it's two or three days, it's usually half-days. And we have four half-days, and we have some full-day classrooms. So whatever it was that was the plan for the student would be what we're trying to execute. Does that make sense?
It does, and I know there's different models already in a normal preschool year, regular preschool year, but I just wanted to clarify that when we're saying full, what we don't mean that suddenly our preschoolers are going five days a week.
No, 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 it's, it's a combination, it's a, it's sort of depends on, on what their schedule is, but yeah, yeah. And then the only other one thing I wanted to mention is, I know in Dr. Thompson's slide, there, there was a recommendation that, talking about masks for little ones. And I know in talking with children's school chiefs, man, a part of my Willett LMPA tactical planning group, so we've had quite a few conversations about PPE and masks and whatnot. And I would like to recommend, and I think Jill would recommend, that masks be required pre-K through 12. I know the slide said K through 12. With the understanding, of course, that in preschool, it's a skill to be learned and a skill to be, you know, adjusted, and we'd have to adapt to that a little bit. But in talking with a lot of my job, like colleagues in other districts who have preschool programs, you know, one of the things we've talked about is how, you know, in this time of COVID-19, wearing a mask is sort of an essential life skill, right? And one of the things that we teach in preschool is essential life skills. You know, how to, how to take care of yourself, how to clean up yourself, all of those things. So we would like to, you know, require masks pre-K to 12 with the understanding that the younger the child, we're going to have to work, and there may be more mask breaks, and then maybe things of that nature.
Thank you. Are there questions on pre-K or K at this time? Joan?
It's the same question I asked before. Does the Director of Health have a position on masks in the K, pre-K and first grade?
She does, it's in our pocket.
Where is it?
It's, I think it's linked, today has been a little bit of a crazy day, just so everybody knows. Like, usually, things are much more organized, but everything that was like shifting as we were preparing for today happened. So it got added pretty late, because the MASC just put out a mask policy this morning that I also added under our lead agenda.
I have the mask policy, I don't have the...
If you go on to the policy part of that, it shows up, it's an email.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was one, I thought policy and EBCFA was one link, it's not, it's two. I apologize.
We did that to trick you.
Did you guys stop doing that?
No, we did not, that's not accurate. So the policy is in there from the MASC, and I would point out that the MASC draft policy actually exempts the grades first and lower from the mask policy. So I do want to acknowledge that the model policy from the MASC does differ from what we're being asked to consider today. And then I did reach out to Sigal earlier. I shared the policy with her from MASC, and then I also let her know we were going to be discussing this tonight, and asked her from a public health point of view, and just based on the science of COVID, what did she think? And it's a brief email, I'll just read it so everybody can hear it and know what we're discussing. So from Sigal, she said, "Requiring younger children to wear masks can create some challenges, and we can use other risk reduction methods and factors to create a lower-risk environment. Mask-wearing is always a good idea, but we also want to make sure we are wearing the mask correctly. They should be tight-fitting and cover the nose and mouth. In addition, you don't want to handle the mask and only touch the ear loops to take on or off. With gait or tight face covering, you don't want to handle the portion that goes on your nose and mouth. This can be a challenge for younger children. It is always about risk reduction and picking the controls that best suit the situation. If younger children can't tolerate or don't wear masks correctly, we should emphasize other measures like social distancing and hand washing. The adults around the children should wear face coverings. Also, younger children represent a small portion of the cases locally and globally. They are less likely to carry the disease, which is another factor that reduces the risk. In Norwood, children under seven represent less than 2%, and then she said it's 1.8% of our total cases. Statewide, we only know the breakdowns zero to 19 years, and that zero to 19-age range are 6% of the cases." So that was her feedback based on the public health science and what, where we are as a state and town.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I mean, the mask is its own decision we have to make tonight, both that and the policy from the MASC. And I don't want to overlook the middle school, because we haven't really dived into that plan yet, and I'm sure Margot can't wait to talk to us.
I think Dr. Frazek thought that she was off the hot seat, I think.
But Dr. Frazek, would you like to join us to talk about the Coakley for a few minutes?
I would be happy to. You miss, like, World War III, dogs barking, there's, there's been a whole other sideshow happening over here at the same time.
Well, we're glad to have you join us. Are there any particular questions on what has been presented about the Coakley tonight from the committee that you want Dr. Frazek to start with?
The one question I have, and I think I'm clear, but again, just to help the community understand, Dr. Frazek, when children are in school, are they, for the most part, staying in one room throughout the day?
Yeah, so for all of their core subjects and the majority of their specials. Really, the only times that we would have them move would be to go and get lunch, that we're hoping to do out of doors for as long as we can, grabbing, kind of a grab-and-go sort of lunch, or they would go get their lunch and then come back to where they're staying, and when they're doing the PE part of wellness class. I think besides that, we really do have teachers going to them. You know, one advantage of the middle school is that we have teams, and so we're really able to align everything with our teams. So we're really kind of look, can we align our, our span, our different foreign language teachers with different teams and, to again, kind of minimize student transitions first and foremost, because anytime that we're going to have to move kids, it's going to take a long time, because it's just the number of students that you have to move in hallways. And then also, of course, to try and minimize the number of adults coming in and out of each room as well.
Thank you. Are there questions on the middle school? Maya?
Dr. Frazek, can you talk about the staffing plan for the, for the middle school? You know, I know that there are teams of teachers that work together. Are you expecting that, like, the entire sixth-grade blue team would be part of one cohort? So they would all be in-person for two days, and they would all be remote for, for three days? Or would each team be broken up into two cohorts and then have...
I'll stop here, because it's, I think, we've gone through all of those iterations. So we are able to work it by team. So we've broken into a blue and a gold cohort, which everyone else decided, and I was in the corner going, so I already have teams with colors. Hang on, people, what am I going to do? But actually, it actually made it easier. So all three of my blue teams are aligned on the blue cohort, all three of my gold teams are aligned on the gold cohort, and then we just divided up the green, so. So, um, if we had a hundred percent of people that chose hybrid, which we're pretty confident we won't, we would have, uh, five teams one day, four teams another. So not a perfect half and half, but obviously, uh, a lot lower numbers. And we think with, um, the percentage that will choose remote learning, it'll probably end up being pretty half and half. So, so yes, so a blue team student would have all of their, so, so if you are a blue cohort and you're there on Monday and Tuesday, and I might be mixing up where we have it, but, um, you would work with the same teacher. You would work with, I think I'm hearing myself talk, sorry. Um, you're working with the same teachers all week long. And teachers are only either teaching in person for core subjects or remotely, they're not trying to do both at the same time. Um, all of the, in our hybrid model, all of the students are in, um, or all of the students are out. And we do that by using, um, multiple rooms. So one of the requests that we made was for additional, um, general education paraprofessionals. We have, we have a couple of things that work on our benefit. We have a number of rooms. And honestly, I don't think I've ever said that this is a benefit on my school before. We have a number of rooms that have walls that can be shoved, that can be, um, can't remember what the word is, but like put away. So two rooms become one. And normally that's a horrible thing. In this particular case, means that we can immediately take, you know, we have four or five rooms that are like that, um, that instantly double their space. So that's great. All of our other rooms all have connecting doors. So if I've got a teacher in one room, they're, they're joining room with their other potentially 10 students is literally right next door to them. Um, and that's why we're looking for some extra paraprofessionals, just to have a different body in the room as they're teaching in both spaces. Um, so yes, so if I'm a student, I, my entire blue team on Monday, I'm in, I'm going to English, Science, Social Studies, Math. They're, they're technically, they're coming to me. Um, in my house, my homeroom house is what we're calling them, just because we got, we got teams, we got cohorts. Now we have houses. Um, and my specialists are coming to me as well. And then on Wednesday, everybody's remote. So, and we put it as a half day model, just because we've been talking about kind of doing a little bit less online time on that Wednesday and also allowing teachers to do a little bit more collaboration on that Wednesday. Um, and then on that Thursday and Friday, they're remote. We are, we are making it a synchronous schedule, all four of those days. Um, and primarily because I see my specialists having to do both in person and remote on the same day. So in other words, if I'm a French teacher and I have five classes a day, which is a normal, uh, a normal load for a teacher, three of those might be in person, two of those might be remote. So, um, keeping the schedules aligned, allow our specialists to do that. They're just doing their remote from their office or classroom at school. Um, and it also keeps kids on a relatively same schedule every day throughout the week. So, which we thought was, um, important for our kids because they do have to be there early, even with this, so. Did I explain that well enough?
Yes, that helps. Yes, thank you.
Anne Marie?
Um, so I don't think, I know this doesn't happen too much at the middle school level. Uh, forgive me, it's been several years. But I know, I think maybe in the eighth graders, there is some differences in maybe math classes, um, and especially in languages. So how are we going to handle where half of your blue cohort is taking French and half of it is taking Spanish? Or one has a higher level math than the other with staying in the same room?
So, um, we try and create our cohorts and in particular our houses to meet as many of those factors as we can. So in other words, if I'm a French student that has accelerated math in grade eight, I'm in a cohort with the other French students that also have accelerated math. Um, that is my fantastic, fabulous, amazing assistant principal's job right now. He is trying to tag all the students together. Um, and, and I will fully say that is not a best educational model. I never normally want all my accelerated kids in one group. Um, but it's one of the things that we have to sort of trade off for, um, better health for our students and a, a better situation that we're in. But we do think we'll be able to, just the way the numbers play out, we do think we will be able to make those cohorts fit all of those things. Cause it is, uh, mostly it's, it's the languages. Um, and then, uh, seventh and eighth grade, you have accelerated math, a few sections.
Other questions on the Coakley? Maya?
Um, I think I saw the answer to this in some of the materials I was looking through. But, um, typically one of the other distinctions that happens is, you know, whether a student is taking general music or band or chorus. And I believe the, the plan is everyone will be in general music, right?
Yeah. So all sixth and seventh graders normally take, in sixth grade, you normally take band, chorus, orchestra. In seventh grade, you normally take band, chorus, orchestra, general music. Um, in eighth grades, it's, it's an elective, so it's a little bit different how we're going to work that. But in sixth and seventh grade, all students will just be taking general music. What we're working on now is I think you saw on our schedule, Wednesdays being sort of instrumentals, chorus, um, things like that. So still trying to kind of work out the details of that with Kathy Connor-Moan, um, and my music staff. But we do something a little bit different on those Wednesdays, just to do those things remotely. Um, because we got that guidance from Desi today as well. So to at least do as many of, like especially, you know, we know honor chorus is really important. We know our band, uh, we don't want kids to just not practice, um, their instruments for a year and not have the opportunity to play together. So it will definitely look different. Um, and we'll definitely be doing some thinking out of the box. And that might be at some point where we try and do some things outside of the school day, um, outside while the weather is still nice. I do, I do have the plus of having many football fields behind me. Maybe a tent city, as you heard by the end of all this, but, uh, doing some of that. But yeah, so all sixth and seventh graders and eighth graders, um, we're really just looking a little bit differently to see if we can either have them choose between taking art or taking music. Um, or in the same way, giving them some freedom to do those instrumental classes on Wednesdays, which really would just mean working with their, they would like, they would miss their remote English class on Wednesday to go to an instrumental online class possibly to schedule it all in. So there's definitely a little bit of work to be done there, but, um, really important to make sure that kids, um, in particular eighth graders, because we know how important it is to continue our programs at the high school level, so.
And then the middle school transportation is a large challenge, right? How many buses do you normally?
I only have 13 buses, Maya. Um, so I think, you know, the transportation survey will be really important because I think part of what we're going to have to do is really look at how we do drop off and having multiple parent drop off spots. Cause I imagine we'll probably have a lot more parents dropping off, um, than taking the bus. Um, and then even how we do drop off. Um, one thing that we did do is we know it's going to be staggered. So normally our Mustang block, which has been our elective block, and we just kind of had to say, we can't do electives this year because we just, we couldn't mix kids up that way. So we reverted back to sort of a standard Mustang block and we've actually split it in half, put half at the beginning of the school day and half at the end to account for these, for what we're assuming will be staggered bus drop offs. Um, and made those into sort of times when kids can work on homework, kind of get started on the day. Hopefully we'll, as we get more of a schedule down, can we work in some SEL pieces during those time periods as well? Um, so we're kind of schedule wise, putting that into place, knowing that it'll be staggered. I'm going to leave the big transportation questions up to, uh, Superintendent Thompson, uh, cause I don't have any answers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So this was a question around transportation, Maya, is just how many buses we need or more into the process?
I, I didn't have a specific question. So I just wanted to address the, the fact that.
It's a challenge.
Transportation, I mean, we in Norwood are, and we're an unusual community in that we have five neighborhood elementary schools. And in many ways, that is horribly inefficient and, and, you know, creates challenges. Oddly, in the face of a global pandemic, it's a benefit. It means we have, you know, we're automatically cohorting our elementary kids into five groups anyway. And then if we split up into, you know, an A and a B or a blue and a gold or whatever, we've broken them down even into smaller cohorts. And so many of our students live within two miles of their, of the elementary school that they attend. So, you know, a lot of times transportation is less of an issue at the elementary school. However, it becomes a large problem at the middle school. Because not only does everyone attend the same middle school, but the, the middle school is located at the very southern border of the town, which just makes it that much harder that there aren't students really, aren't, there's a much smaller percentage of students who are within walking distance.
Hmm.
Yep. True.
So I'm trying to think how best to, um, well first, are there any other questions before I try to move us along and, and possibly some decisions? Okay. Um, so we do have in our packet, the outline for the final district reopening plan from DESE um, that has to be submitted soon. Um, and this is one of the next steps for Dr. Thompson and the administrative team to write this, this plan. Um, Dr. Thompson put in the PowerPoint tonight, um, you know, the recommendation of the hybrid model that we have been discussing in great detail, uh, with everybody this evening. Um, by the 10th, we do have to vote on what our reopening plans are. So my question to the committee is, Dr. Thompson?
Yes. So by, right now, we have to submit our plan on the 10th. So this, just want to be clear on that, unless the, the chair asks for an extension. So.
Oh, I have to submit the waiver?
Oh, yep.
You didn't tell me that when we talked about it before.
Hey, I had to, I had to give you, give you a few surprises, but.
Okay. Well, um, perhaps let me know what that looks like. Is it, is it just a quick form or is this going, is it just so?
You have to write a letter and sign it.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have a couple of, Joan?
Uh, I can try to move us along too, um, because I am not comfortable making a recommendation to adopt the hybrid plan at this moment in time. We got the information three hours before this meeting. There's information that as it's written is not, um, easily translatable. Um, and I believe that that's not just for me. Um, so that's due no fault, um, of anyone. Um, and I, I heard a lot of, there will be variations of things. There will be a lot of variations of things. And I'd like to suggest that we include in our plan floors, um, floor expectations around things. So at the elementary school level, um, maybe there's an expectation of, you know, a, a minimum of two hours of synchronous time with the teachers, um, however that looks. Recognizing, right, that currently it's a lot more than that, but what's kind of our minimum expectations that we can produce to the community? So my recommendation is that we table a discussion, or we table the vote until Monday and that you write that lovely letter requesting a waiver.
Other thoughts?
Uh, sorry, was that a waiver or an extension?
Extension.
It's, it's a, it's a waiver to not submit the plan on the 10th. Uh, it's a waiver for an extension.
Right.
It's not a waiver to not submit the plan.
Right, no, I know we have to submit the plan, but I mean, the information, we need more time just to judge everything. There's so much information coming in, you know, I, I'm still, the last two sessions, including this one, I haven't been able to formulate my thoughts enough to come, give my position on this issue. It's, it's really, it's a no win situation almost. We're doing the best we can. So, you know, asking for a little more time would be tremendous.
Right. So ba- so basically the, you know, the, you could probably get two more days to the 12th. Um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll correct that, that slide on the, uh, on the schedule for the elementary, but that, but I'm, until I can move on, I'm not going to have any other information for anybody.
But we don't have a written copy of the plan. We have the PowerPoint slides. I would like to review a written copy of the plan that's going to be submitted.
But what plan am I writing?
Maya?
So I think maybe what we're looking for tonight is some sort of vote of a, um, a general idea of what plan we want. And then, um, yeah, as I do understand that, I, I, and I agree with Joan, that I would like to see, you know, the final draft of this before, before we actually take the final vote. And, and I do think that there's some, you know, there's some things we can request a little bit more detail. But, um, I would like to acknowledge that we, if we ever plan to be in person at all this year, I think we have to go through the entire exercise of planning out a hybrid program right now. Uh, well, I mean, not tonight. I mean, like before the school year starts. Like, you know, I've heard some suggestions that we should start the year remotely and ease into it. I'm not necessarily taking a position on that right now. But even if we think that we might start remote and ease into it in a few weeks, um, we still need to figure out right now how that's going to look. Because you need to assign students, assuming that they'll be in these hybrid situations. And then if that's all worked out, then you could switch to all remote and, and then have the ability to switch back. But if you were just to say like, oh, forget it, we can't figure out all the details of the hybrid right now, we're going to start with all remote. Uh, then we will have locked ourselves into too many things. We, so I think we need to move forward. I would at some point like to have our students in school this year. I understand that there are real staffing issues. I understand that there are real concerns with childcare for both the families and for the teachers and, but I think that no matter, you know, even if every school district around us was starting hybrid and we were all starting hybrid together. And maybe that would make childcare issues a little bit easier for some people right now. At some point during the year, there will be a situation where some of our neighboring districts will be remote and we might not, or vice versa. Right? That's the idea of this is that we will each be making our, our changes based on what's going on in our local communities, not just district, and maybe not just district wide, but school by school, sometimes classroom by classroom. So I think that, um, it's important for us to present this hybrid plan.
Joan?
I'm not sure what we're choosing between. The only thing, that's the other reality is you're asking us to endorse a hybrid plan. We know that we can't go full because there is health concerns and health issues, right? So that one's off the table. We know we can't go full in person. You're asking us to endorse a hybrid plan, but I don't know what the alternative is. What does a full remote look like? How do we, how, how do we pick between, so how, how can we best judge what's in the best? Um, I'm gonna, I, I want, I'm concerned is the only word that's coming to mind, but that's not the right word. How do we judge what's in the best interest of the community and our students? In terms of student achievement, educational goals, all of those things, if we don't know what we're choosing between? And we don't know, and we don't have a good understanding of potentially what those options are.
Right. So the, I mean, the only way we could go full in person is if there was no social distancing. So when that.
That's off the table. We know we can't go forward. We know we can't go full in person.
Right. I'm, I'm hoping someday we'll be at least darn close back to that. But that's, you know, it's just not physically possible and, and safe for our kids. So the question is, are, are we building this as a remote, as a hybrid model that flips to remote? So basically the only difference between whether the kids come in, if we build it as, as a hybrid model, is that kids don't come to school. So, you know, there are risks involved with that, where, where you've hired staff to do certain things. But maybe we repurpose them if we're with the remote academy. But the, the challenge is, and, and, you know, and I think I've had this conversation with you folks back in the, in the spring, that we needed to build something that was flexible and able to flip on a dime. And that's kind of what we're able to do. That's, that's what we're looking to do. So if we build it as a hybrid, we just don't put kids on buses and we continue the, the in-person instruction would happen through the, the devices and the investments we've made in technology, both in hardware, software and training that, that needs to continue. Okay? But the idea from the get-go, from last spring, was that we needed to design a curriculum and design a model where we would be able to flip without having to stop and restart. So the question is, if you, if the committee wants that start to be remote and remote only, then we will build it that way. If you want the, if you want the model to be a hybrid or to attempt to do hybrid, and that's going to be what we're hopefully starting with, and I say capital H hopefully, because there still is the funding and the transportation, a whole bunch of these. So, but at least if we build it that way, we have an option. If we build it as a remote. If we build it as a remote only, where we go back to, this is your class. This is how you're doing it. We're not even going to approach remote learning. Uh, I'm sorry, in-person learning, then we can build it that way. We don't have to worry about bus routes. We don't have to worry about uh adding staff. We don't have to worry about fiscal constraints.
We are, we are required to sub, we are required to submit three plans anyway. So what I'm, what I'm asking for is we know that going back in person is not working for us. I I I'm not, how can you say, do you want us to build a remote plan? Or do you want us to build a hybrid plan when we don't know what that remote would look like? We don't know what your administrative team would come up with? So if you're telling me that what it would look like, the remote only option would look like the hybrid, the remote version of the hybrid, that's fine, but I want to see that in writing. I want to see a plan for that. And it should be very easy then if the remote is the hybrid version of remote is our full remote. That's great, but it needs to get written down and we need to see it and we need to see some floors around things. Because I write, I I appreciate the need for flexibility. But there is also, and it's, there's also a consistency and equity issue. And those things are addressed by floors, by creating bottom and bottom baseline expectations around what will happen. So that every single third grader, every single high school kid knows that there will be at least two hours of synchronous instruction a day. And and our goal is six, right? Or our goal is five or our goal is four, but we don't have floors right now. And I cannot make a decision if I don't know what the consistent experience across our district will be.
Okay, well, let, all right, so let me go back. So the commissioner has said and is going to be and is designing ways to measure this, that remote learning is going to be robust. It is going to mirror a full skill, school day with grades and attendance for both students and teachers.
So the commissioner is not, the com, we are the, it is our responsibility at the local level. I appreciate what the commissioner is doing, but the same thing with 170 days. It's actually our vote as to whether or not we move it from 180 to 170 days. We can and still meet the state standards at 170 days, but that doesn't mean we have to. So while we all know, I appreciate the commissioner a ton at this particular moment in time and feel that his leadership has been um slightly delayed and late. I want to know what we are talking about doing for Norwood.
So when the commissioners, so he's going to have an accountability. The commissioner can do certain things and accountability is one of them. So he's talking about accountability for districts to have a school day remotely with with grading and attendance, which is not what was done last year. Okay, so he said last year it was only a half a day and there was going to be pass fail. That was not a local decision, that was the commissioner's.
What are our expectations?
So let me go back to, so let me go back to, so if we want to say we are going to be remote only, then we would build it much like it looks, would would look on it, you would have people assigned to a classroom, teachers assigned to teach those kids in a remote only fashion. We would design a school day, a schedule that would look, you know, not with in-person, but you would have a schedule where kids would show up for classes and they would do it remotely.
How can we meet our edge, all I'm asking is for something that we can compare so that we can best judge how we meet our educational goals. If it, and and just saying, should we do remote or should we do, or should we do hybrid? That doesn't help me answer the question, what is the best method or mode for us to meet our educational goals? Unless you want us to get like, you know, th- then it's, eh eh, we have to, then, then are we creating the plan? Because I could, I could say, I think remote is the best thing if we do X, Y, and Z, but like, I'm just making stuff up. Right, like, I don't know those schools like the principals do. I don't know the, you know, I I could say, I think, you know, so that's what I'm saying is that we can't. I don't feel like I can make a decision, first of all, because we got the information very late today, right?
Trust me.
And I'm obviously having trouble comprehending what what at least one of those plans was, and I want to make sure I can go back and read it. But I don't feel like I can, what, I can't figure out what I'm supposed to be choosing between if I don't even have a skeleton for both.
Can I, so I want to ask a question, Dr. Thompson and and your administrative team. So the saying, no, we want to know the full detail. And then once we have all that, then we vote. So I think it's just two different approaches, working towards the same goal, but just two very different approaches.
Okay, so it depends on where your pivot point or your basis. Okay, so and I'm not particularly happy with the amount of time between the feasibility part and this plan part and the lack of guidance of what it's supposed to be a vote. But when I look at that outline,
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at it from a preferred starting point. Because the preferred starting point will influence how the other pieces fit together. The way I would like to write it is how the other pieces fit together. Or you're asking me to write two separate plans? Because one plan or the plan that I am asking you to consider is this hybrid plan is is the base where we're starting from, where we can flex to full remote. If we're going to go full remote, okay, we're not, we're going to have, we're not going to add staff. We're not going to worry about bus runs. We're not going to worry about serving lunch. Our basis is remote only. The difference would be in the instructional piece, which we've, we've talked about in in theory, and there's some negotiations around that as well. Okay? So it's you know, there are, there are some communities that that have decided that that they want to start in a hybrid and that's the, that's their starting point? To develop the overall plan for the three models? Or is it a remote only starting point and that's how you're building the plan?
So how are other districts, and I don't know if you have the answer, how are other districts who I've seen voted on, were starting? No guidance, I I know, I know there's no guidance and I know how frustrating this is for everybody in this.
Right, so there, you know, and again, there's multiple layers of frustration and I don't want to be, you know, I I I don't want it to seem like I'm I'm, I I don't want to be reflecting it on you folks, but the way I have approached this from last spring was, was to create an instructional model that would better serve our students and better give our teachers the ability to do and work in multiple ways. So that was the approach. I don't know, because ev- and and this goes back, normally what happens is you have years to develop these things. And lots of people have time to share ideas. So you get to weigh different perspectives, or I'm doing the here, this over here and I'm doing that over there. That is not what is happening right now. Everybody is scrambling, everybody is grabbing at straws. You know, um, you know, this team has worked, you know, I I've challenged them since, since the spring. This team has worked very hard to come up with a model that can move in at least two or three different directions. Um, you know, good work on 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 the curriculum piece. And I'll be honest with you, and I've, and I've been honest with you from the get-go. Just because we say we're starting with a remote model, we're starting, that doesn't mean that we're going to be able to pull it off. Or that we are going to be ready for the 17th, 16th of September. We might have to shift gears. Um, so that's, i- i- if you want me to try to write two plans for Monday, I will try to write two plans for Monday.
I think um Maya and Joan, or Dr. Wyeth and and then Maya.
Um, yeah, it's for, for what it's worth, is I read what's being asked on the 10th is for the superintendent to recommend one plan and to explain that plan. Not, you know, the first round, we we, we sort of explained all three scenarios. And now they're asking us, I think, to refine it down to one. And so to answer Joan's question, you know, which is, which is the most educationally sound plan? Well, I think it's clear in everyone's mind, the most educationally sound plan is to have all kids return to school. But that is not going to work in this environment. So the most educationally sound plan is to have kids return some of the time to school and some of the time to be remote, which is the hybrid model. And the least preferred plan educationally is to have all kids um at home because of social emotional reasons and the host of everything else that we all know about. Um, so, you know, that's kind of the way the chips fall, in my mind, anyway. And that's why I think what Dave's trying to do is saying, you know, for what's due on the 10th, it looks like, from our vantage point, what makes the most sense is a hybrid model. Because of the three models, that's the most viable model for us at this point in time. You know? And you could pivot from it, you know?
So is the idea for a remote, that when you're talking about pivoting, is it what is currently outlined in the hybrid model on the remote days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we do have a remote plan.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Joan, the only, the only difference, trust me, it's, I mean, part, part of the problem was, what was it, at 5:30, I'm trying to finish this slideshow. I had, yeah, I lost power at 3 o'clock yesterday afternoon and totally screwed everything up, so.
I personally think that we should email the commissioner and tell him we're not submitting a plan until he's finished giving us guidance. This is not you, this is the commissioner should be should, should, it should make some decisions, stop putting out unfunded mandates, like, kind of lead. And so I get that this is not your fault.
No, no.
This, this is, this is, there is no guidance that has been coming out in a timely manner at all from the state.
No.
Joan, and I think some of the the thinking around the elementary plan of, as Diane spoke earlier, of thinking of Monday as Monday, Tuesday as Tuesday, Wednesday as Wednesday, is that we would be able to pivot then i- i- in the situation where we needed to go from hybrid to remote. It would be more natural of a pivot to be able to continue on with the remote teaching in that sort of um a model where, whereas if we were teaching the same thing Monday, Tuesday, then Thursday, Friday, teaching the same thing, it wasn't as much of a natural progression, should we have to switch from model to model.
Right, so eh, you know, and the advantage of this, of this schedule and the way we're designing this curriculum is it keeps moving whether you're in person or at home. So the only, you know, and I jokingly say, the only difference is, is the buses don't run and the school doors don't open to go to remote. So.
Okay, so then we do have a plan that's embedded within the hybrid plan for the remote model. Okay, great, thank you. Can we just, can you just write that down for me as we have learned that I do not hear things well? It would be great if we could see that written down as this is what the remote plan is, this is what the hybrid plan is. I think the other thing that I would also like to see for Monday is floors around synchronous. Um, so what is the bare minimum that we would expect so that we have equity across the district? Um, so if the administration, the administrative team could look at that. And then um I have one question about the staffing. Are those, um, are those teachers, do they become union members or are they hired on as long-term subs? I didn't say I had an easy question about staffing, I said I had a question about staffing.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's another topic for for discussion. You know, and that's, and that, you know, and and that's a estimate at this point. Um, that's, that's to do the hybrid model, it doesn't really cover the um, you know, the academy piece.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we could get some clarity around whether or not they become union members or whether or not they become contracted for a year. So if we're hiring an extra 10 or 20 people and then we flip to remote for three quarters of the year and we don't need them, or we go back to full in person and suddenly, you know, we have the lowest class sizes around because we just hired an extra 20 people this year. But we don't need them when Moderna makes the vaccine and it comes out in January, so.
Right, right, and we all do it first week.
That's my new fantasy.
Right.
The, the way I'm interpreting that, and and obviously, Joan, there's a lot of work that has to be done around the funding piece and the hiring piece, is that we, we have to be very clear that this is for this situation only. And um, you know, Anne Haley, the FinCom Chair, is here in this meeting with us. And um, I gave her a heads up yesterday to let her know we are going to be talking about all of this because I didn't want um, her to be completely caught off guard by this conversation. But there is a long conversation ahead around the funding piece and the hiring. Potential, and I'm sorry to be the black rain cloud, but there is the potential that the hybrid model is not fiscally feasible for noran public schools, even if we vote on it tonight or on Monday. And the community needs to understand that.
Yep.
Um, so how would like, how would the committee like to proceed at this point? We definitely have Monday's meeting. Um, but is there, I I'm hearing very clearly from Dr. Wyeth and Dr. Thompson that more direction is needed for them to come back to us on Monday.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, Dave.
I make a motion that um the administration provide us with their hybrid plan in as much detail as possible so we can vote on it um as we're required to. Um, I do have a lot of concerns. Um, equity is a major piece of it, safety in our community is a major piece of it. The, the very idea that kids, this, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm pontificating, I should just stop the motion. So that's my motion, that the administration provide us with the hybrid plan with as much detail as possible uh as best as they can.
Teresa, I'm pretty sure I had a motion.
Oh.
Way at the beginning of that, I think I said that I had a motion to table and to ask for both plans in a written form. Did I say I motioned?
I didn't think so, I don't remember you saying table, but um.
Then I, I retract my pretend motion.
No, that's okay, I could be wrong, so if somebody, if everybody else heard her say that, somebody tell me. Um.
She, Teresa, she recommended, she didn't make a motion.
Oh, I didn't say I motioned, I apologize.
Thank you, Donna. So, so Dave Catania, your motion, repeat it.
Is that the administration provide us with the hybrid plan with as much detail as possible. Um, so that we have enough time to review it so we can make a vote on Monday as required.
Okay, so I second on that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, is there further discussion on that motion? Joan and then Maya.
Let my, Maya, please, go first.
I, I just have a concern that we, we are going to be voting um on, on Monday late. This, you know, we need to get an extension, we think maybe we can get an extension till Wednesday. If, if we suddenly switch to remote only, and I'm not even sure that we can, I I guess we can say that's our preferred method. I don't really know if, how this works exactly. But, you know, if we do remote only, does that give the administration any time to respond? I mean, that would mean, like, from what I, what Dr. Wyeth is saying, the, the report, the the plan needs to be, this is our preferred, preferred plan. So I, I guess I'm just concerned that if people aren't feeling comfortable with the hybrid model, then what are we going to do Monday night?
That's a great question. I, I, yeah, I'm also concerned, one second, Joan, that um just time-wise and and with the way that we have to post meetings and um as soon as we end this meeting, whenever we end this meeting, I will find out what that letter is that I have to write for an extension. Um, but I don't know, I know there's not a whole lot of room for an extension. So if we come back Monday and we're still not in a place to vote, earliest we can meet then again would be Thursday, unless we post something now preventatively. But I also don't really want to continue to add meetings if we don't have to, and I'm sure none of you do. So I don't have an answer for Maya, but it's a really great point. But Joan?
We've all talked about the fact that we can change our preferred plan, correct? Is that true? That's true. So is there a reason? Why are we bothering? Why are we fighting about this? Well, I'm just like, what's the point? Because we could vote, we could vote tonight to go remote because we know it has no cost implications and direct the superintendent to think that we would really prefer to go hybrid pending financial considerations, like what, what is, what is the purpose of this vote? Because we could also vote on, we can vote on Monday to adopt the hybrid, but we need to hire, my notes are all over the place right now. We need to hire 20 teachers and get 11 portables to make it work. So we can't really vote on that and have it be a binding vote on Monday unless, you know, somebody won the lottery. So.
We're not going to know the budget by Monday.
Right. So, and my, my, my recommendation, if I can find it.
So is the point of this just to make sure our school committees are like doing stuff? Is this the commissioners like stick to just make sure that school committees are actually just like making plans?
No, well, it comes down to, I mean, unfortunately, families need to know what the preferred model is probably going to look like. That's, that's the other piece of this. So, you know, that's, you know, you know, that's, that's the other, you know, the, the other problem is the longer, you know, I mean, I don't know, five days is a monumental amount. I mean, normally people start in April figuring out what they're going to be doing for childcare and how they're going to manage the next year. And we're, we're at the beginning of August, you know what I mean? So it's, it's not, it's not fair to anybody. This whole thing is not fair to anybody, but.
Can I? Oh, go ahead, Joan.
So for me to vote on Monday, I would need to know what are the financials, right? For the, I know, but for the proposal, if this is going to be a meaningful vote, I would want to know floors to ensure consistency for instructional time. And I would want to know, I didn't write it down, it's too late. There's something else and I can't remember. Sorry. Oh, write down the remote plan, write down the remote plan. That's it. Those are the three things I would need to vote for a remote.
Okay.
And feel like it's a real vote.
If I only, only give you two out of, two out of the three, how do you feel about that?
I would, I'm guessing that I'm going to have to refer you to the Chair of the Finance Commission. If the thing that I, that I don't know, is the finances.
Right. I'm not going to have that.
What did you say, Joan, the financials, which we're not going to have? The remote plan and what was the third?
Floors for synchronous instruction. Like what is the, the bottom line that we don't want to go beyond, we don't want to go below so that there's equity?
Got it, got it. Ann Marie and then Maya.
Make sure I'm muted. Yeah. I, I just, I just want to express that I'm really worried about dragging this out. I mean, like, if the parents are, are waiting with bated breath, I know anything could change. We know, you know, everybody knows that some of this could change in, in, by Monday, there could be a huge outbreak and we all are going remote. That's all there is to it. But I, I really worry about not moving forward with something. I, I don't think it looks good for us to file an extension. I think that, you know, when with all the districts around us making a decision, it, it, it feels like we're not moving forward. We always, I know we need some more information. I completely appreciate Joan that you want like the floors and things like that. We're not going to have the financials. And as I said, things can just change minute to minute. So I really do worry about dragging this out and not making some sort of a decision as soon as humanly possible, even if it is ceremonious, because we just know that it's probably going to change.
So just as I, I cannot say in-person and none of us can because of the safety, like, we just, we just know it's not feasible. Right now, in this moment, at 10 o'clock PM on August 5th, I don't feel the hybrid is feasible because of fiscal piece. And I, even if we end up voting for it tonight, and I'm going to make a whole lot of people really angry and they're probably going to email me, and that's okay. They can email. But even if we vote for the hybrid right now, I, I just think that there's so much that's going to potentially not come together from a fiscal piece. So if we have to vote on something now, I, it wouldn't be that for me.
But if we don't vote for the hybrid right now, do we, I mean, I'm worried that we walk away from it and don't work towards trying to make it happen. So, I mean, that's my fear is that we're like, okay, well, we're going to go remote. And again, like, like Joan was, like we were saying, you don't hire anybody, you don't look for those outside spaces. You don't, you know, because we're going remote. So I, I really want to make sure that whatever we vote on, we're going to be working towards it. And I think, you know, you know, childcare issues aside, a majority of parents want to see their kids, at least in school, a couple of days a week to get that one-on-one instruction, not one-on-one. And I, I feel, I worry that if we don't start working on this soon and working towards it even without that financial piece finalized, that it's just, we're just dragging it out. We're always going to be looking for a little bit more information.
Right. So, so what the committee is doing is the committee is choosing, be it today or Monday, what the preferred method of trying to reopen is. And, you know, again, like I said, in, in my recommendations, the fluid situation, there will be other votes around this, around funding and staffing, and there will be other votes that will be, this is not a one and done. I don't see this as a one and done sort of thing. It is, it is what the committee would prefer to see us try to start with.
I'm just going to read the opening paragraph of the Dussey Form. I just want everybody in the community to hear what it says we are supposed to do by August 10th. It says, "Expectations for final district reopening plans due by August 10th. As districts prepare for two, for step two of this process, finalizing their comprehensive reopening plans, please note that plan should be written in apparent friendly format, translated into the primary languages of students' homes, and posted on the district website. All plans must be posted by August 10th, and then it lists everything that they want included." That sounds pretty final to me.
It also sounds like a lot more than what we currently have. Sorry, Maya.
Yeah, Maya, go ahead.
So, so I, I hear what you say, that that sounds pretty final, but, but as Dr. Thompson has said, the, the hybrid model, like the whole idea of a hybrid model is that partly that you can flex back and forth into a full remote if you need to. So, like, even if, even if we were all 100% on the same page right this second and we had the funding locked in place and we knew we were going to march forward with hybrid and we present that as hybrid, that still doesn't change the fact that if there's an outbreak, we're all going remote. So, like, it's, final is a relative term. So that was the one point. But the other thing is, you know, you know, budget is like a, a, a big important thing with me and it's something I obviously focus, spend a lot of time on. But I actually totally understand why the administration doesn't have a, a final budget at this point because nothing is set in stone right now. We, we can't figure out what these numbers are going to look like until we know how many people are going to opt for the remote academy. And we can't figure that out until we tell people what we're hoping for our plan. And if, if we find that 30% of our kids choose the remote option, then we may find that we don't need 20 staff members. We may, you know, like, there's, we need to, to make a choice so that we can move forward and collect more data and, and then make a plan from there. I just think there's so many, if we wait, there's so many things that are sort of circular here. Like, you know, we don't know the budget until we know the number of students, but we don't know the number of students till we tell everybody the plan and then we ask them. And then it just like, at some point, we have to stop and we have to say, okay, let's just lock this in. And my, my recommendation is that we lock in hybrid as our remote, I'm sorry, hybrid as our option. First of all, because I do think it's important to get students in the district, in the classroom at some point and because we do have that flexibility.
Yeah. Dr. Thompson, can I ask a question? And, you know, your admin team is, is on the meeting as well. So a question to all of you. If we vote yes, hybrid with the contingency that we want a phased-in hybrid approach proposed to us on Monday as part of the detailed plan. So not that September 16th, everybody pre-K to K goes back on the hybrid models was presented, but that there's phases. And I'm just making this up as I'm talking and it would be up to all of your expertise. But that September 16th, the hybrid model we saw tonight at the elementary level starts. And then two weeks later, the hybrid model that we saw at the middle school starts, something like that. Is that possible between now and Monday to present to us in a plan?
We could, we could easily talk about what, what sections of students we would start with. I would probably have, have, you know, a week sort of between bringing the next layer in. Part of my concern, again, the ability to build relationships, set routines and that sort of thing. My concern is if we wait too long, we might be in remote and we don't get that opportunity. But, but yeah, we had, we had talked just briefly about maybe starting, you know, we have to start with our most needy students, who would be the four-day-a-week folks. And then maybe certain transitional, you know, the sixth graders come in and the ninth graders come in or something along that line for a week and get those routines down. Give us a chance to look at traffic patterns, give us a chance to look at, you know, how kids move around the buildings and solve issues and make sure safety is, is imposed in small numbers. I mean, but again, the other, the other side of that is I don't want to have a phase of, you know, five kids every two weeks and all of a sudden we're looking, looking at a full remote in January, when, a, a full hybrid in January, when we're actually possibly having to be in full remote. So that's, that's my concern on that end. So I wouldn't want to build it too far out. You know, but it is, unfortunately, and, you know, when, you know, time of going in circles, I, I would love to be able to find a corner right now because all I feel I'm doing is running in circles. But, but it, it, it's one of those things, we, we need to have a point where we can do the rest of it because time's ticking away. We're, we're at that point where we're, we're kind of running out of time. It's.
Teresa, just so I'm clear, were you suggesting, or asking us, is it possible to phase from a remote plan to a hybrid plan? Would that be our?
I'm, I'm thinking that if we made the commitment as a district that, yes, we believe in, we're supporting, we are doing everything we can to make the hybrid model work. But the hybrid as presented tonight with everybody pre-K to 12, starting on September 16th or whatever the date is, instead of that, a phased-in hybrid approach. So there may be one to three weeks where some level of education is remote, but we're not going to call it remote. It, it is our phased-in hybrid approach.
I don't know, we'd have to talk about that with the team, I think. You know, I don't know how to, how to structure that right out of the gate. I mean, conceptually, it kind of makes sense to me that, you know, we, we all start remote until we get more information about the finances and what we can and can't do. And then once we have some grounding in those realities, we can move to a hybrid model. That kind of conceptually makes sense. But logistically, I don't know.
Well, when I think of the word hybrid, it means the combination, right? So if we're talking about, if we are saying tonight as a committee, if we vote yes, we are supporting and going for the hybrid model, that just means some students in the district are in and some students in the district are remote. That's what we would be committing to. And then where I'm coming at with the phased-in approach is that it's just a little bit different than what we talked about tonight. Instead of some students across the board being in, some home, maybe over the course of just a couple of weeks, I'm not asking or suggesting for months, but a couple of weeks. Taking into consideration the science of COVID and the cohorts that are less likely to transmit it, the lower grades. Taking into consideration stages of development, taking into consideration where our students are more likely to thrive initially in the remote setting. It just seems that starting with our elementary in a hybrid model in the first week or so makes sense. That's just what is in my head.
I just wanted to point out that there are districts out there who are, who are trying to do exactly what you're talking about, Teresa, that there are districts who are proposing a phased-in model where, and, and it varies from, you know, district to district, where you're starting with everybody fully remote. Within a few weeks, you're bringing back your high-need students, like Dr. Thompson was talking about. A few weeks later, bringing in, you know, the next level of need and then et cetera, et cetera. So it's not something that's completely coming out of left field. So that, I just want to put it out there that there are other districts who are proposing that.
I do tend to live in left field, but thank you.
I didn't mean to imply that you weren't, but I just wanted to point out that this is not something that.
No, no, I know you weren't implying that. I'm just saying, I, I know I'm throwing a curveball into this conversation.
We, 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 we would have to start immediately with our, with our high-need students because that's a requirement, but.
So there is a motion on the table. And, and I know, Dave Catania, you structured it in a way that are we supporting a hybrid model? I guess I'm just throwing out a slightly different way to, to think about it.
So Teresa, my motion was just to hear the full proposal with more detail on a hybrid model and then we can vote on it. I mean, I, I absolutely will amend my motion to support remote learning with a preference toward the hybrid model until we can align our finances to actually implement the hybrid model.
Um, I think Joan and then Maya.
I do not feel comfortable until I've seen a written version of the plan that we would be approving.
Right. I'm saying that we're going to have it presented to us hopefully by Monday with more detail.
So I didn't, that part wasn't included. So you're looking at table it until Monday with additional detail? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. That is my motion.
Maya, did you have a comment?
I did have a comment, but do you want to wait, do, we want to do a second on Dave's motion? Because now I'm a little lost on where we're at with motions.
Yeah, I am too. Okay. So Dave, your amended motion, please repeat.
So, so I amended the motion to say that we will have the administration give us a more comprehensive plan on the hybrid model, that we will vote on Monday whether we're going to accept that. Yeah, that's the same motion I started with. It's, it's really hard to wordsmith this together because I, I'd like to incorporate the fact that you're saying, you know, we start with, let me just keep it simple. Monday, administration, please provide us with a more comprehensive, detailed plan on the hybrid plan. And from there, we can discuss if we're going to pursue that or maybe go remote until we can get the finances aligned to support the plan. So to satisfy Joan, to satisfy me, we just need more details so that we can vote on something before saying yes to it right now. So in summary, motion is to ask for a more detailed hybrid plan that we can vote on Monday and discuss on Monday.
Okay, so second on that motion. Since Dave, Joan, are you seconding?
I'm seconding that motion.
Discussion on that?
All right. So I, I guess this is sort of related to that. It's not directly related. It was in response to your suggestion of phasing in. I just, I don't think that phasing in solves any of our financial concerns because most of the hires that we're looking to do are to support the elementary model. So it's, you know, we need to make a determination what the elementary model is going to look like. We need to figure out that finance piece of the, a big part of the finances have to be figured out before we can bring the elementary back on a hybrid model. Really before, and I would argue, before we can bring anybody back, even in a remote model, unless you're committing to being remote for the rest of the year. If you, if we, if we want to commit to being remote for the rest of the year, then we can say, okay, the finances don't matter. But if we want to try to go hybrid at some point, we need to figure that out now.
Right, valid, but we're not going to know that by Monday. So I feel like we're going to have this exact same conversation on Monday if the motion and the request is a hybrid model, and those details on Monday.
But what we're asking, what we're submitting to the state is this is our plan. And that would be our plan as of Monday.
Right.
Right? Because there's no way we can know finances until we know how many students. And we can't know how many students until we know what the plan is and we can't, and, and then we have to figure out the money and then we have to wait for, you know, like, we can announce that this is our hybrid, that we're, our commitment, our expectation, it's our expectation, not our commitment. Our expectation is that we are in a hybrid model. And then we move forward with that until something becomes an absolute, you know, stumbling block and there's no way around it, either that there's a disease outbreak or that there's some, you know, problem that we find with the, the finances or. problem that we find with the, the finances or the transportation or, or something. And then also that can happen level by level.
Amy.
I just want to say that, you know, I, I appreciate that we want some more information written down, but I really feel strongly that we should just, we should vote on this tonight. I think that we need to start the process. We need to move forward. We need to get parents on board with figuring out if they're full remote or not. So we can get so many other pieces in place. Having, you know, I, I, I appreciate wanting, you know, more information like the floors, for example, but at that, I think we have enough information tonight to vote. That information wouldn't change my vote. Because it's, I, the plan is in place. If it's a two hour floor, it's not going to change what I'm thinking tonight. Even if it's written out in more detail. And I think we really need to move forward for the parents to be able to decide what they're going to do in this, in the fall so that we can figure out how, what our resource needs actually are. We're not going to know the finance needs.
Right, right. Um, Joan?
We can't move forward. The, the parents aren't going to know. Any parent who's watching this is going to know that the vote that we're making tonight is solely dependent upon the funding. So you're still kind of left in a position of uncertainty is my first point. My second point is, is that we don't really know what the plan is and no offense, Dave, but I am vastly uncomfortable committing our students to a school structure when we got that information three hours. Well, at this point it's like eight hours ago, but when we got this three hours before the meeting, the slides are incorrect, right? As has been clarified. But I am not confident that what is going to go in is what I fully understand in my head. And as a matter of course, I, I cannot, I cannot support voting, and this is the last time I'll say it. I cannot support voting for something that I have not seen. And that contains errors in the presentation.
Maya, hold on, Maya and then Dave.
So I was just going to say, like, I, I think that there's two steps here. That there's the step of like, which model do we want to direct? Do we want to tell the administration is our expectation of what this plan is going to be written for? Then I do think that there's a step of the final blessing of the plan. Like, I agree, we should see the final version. We should get a chance to ask detailed questions and things like that. But what I'm saying is, like, if we really aren't comfortable that hybrid is the way we want to go, we should just decide that right now.
So are you, are, wait, wait. So Maya, so what are you saying? Cause I'm arguing that we don't do the final blessing until Monday. That's the only piece that I'm, I'm arguing about right now.
Right. But I'm arguing that I, I, I'm okay with like, let's, let's, you know, wait until Monday to bless the final draft that goes in. But I think we need to take a vote on what our expectation is.
I'm in agreement with that. I didn't understand Dave's motion in that way. I understood that the final blessing.
I don't think Dave's motion was that way, but that's.
Dave, what was your motion?
Motion is to get more information so that you have enough information on Monday, Joan.
Can I just clarify something for the committee? Because it's Wednesday night and our meeting is Monday at five. And there are a million things going on for everybody in this meeting, including myself. So even the fact that I now have to write a letter for a waiver because this isn't going to be submitted on Monday is causing me a little bit of stress. And I know all the administrators are also having a lot of stress with everything they have to get done. So I just want to set realistic expectations that if we're meeting Monday at five, we are probably not getting this written plan until Monday morning at the earliest.
Yeah. And if I could say, I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain you're going to get a lot more detail because we're missing details, you know, and in order to provide more details for you. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, we can certainly clean up a slide or two, you know, and, and give you time to digest what's been developed by the administrative teams. But beyond that, I'm not sure how much more different information, new information you'll get on Monday. Except for maybe, as I say, one slide, you know?
We had three hours to digest that there were going to be 20 additional positions. You need to give us time to, to talk to people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're looking at, that's, that's back of the envelope calculations. It's well over a million dollars.
Well, I think Karen has something she wants, wants to share. So Ms. Sheridan?
Yeah, I just had a question. If, if you phase in the plan, is that going to change the amount of staff that you need? Because that, I know that the staffing is going to be the biggest piece of it with the cost. And, um, I know that the new grant that they just got, um, is only till December. So that's not going to be able to cover that staff for the full year. So that's my question is, if we phase it in, is that going to lessen the amount of stuff that we need to find the funding for?
Yeah, those are all questions to, to, to figure out. So, you know, what, what was new today was, was detailed student schedules and, and numbers of staff, but the general format for how this hybrid would work with two days on, three days off, that's been, that, that was not new information. There definitely was new information today. And like I said, I had planned to have it to you yesterday, but.
There was also new information around instructional practices, which is significant. We did not understand that Wednesday was a fully synchronous online day. Because we had conversations in, uh, we had conversations around MOU agreements and stuff like that about different things. We were, there were other, there is, there is quite a bit of new information here that for me does actually make a difference. Um, we always knew it was two on, three off, but we did not know what those three off looked like.
I'm unclear how to move us forward. I know there is a motion. The motion on the table, Dave Catania, is that we are requesting the administrative team, um, to provide more detail in this plan format that Desi wants, um, around the hybrid model. Yes, that's your motion?
Yes. And that, that's just give us a little more time to digest what we've been presented with today as well. So I don't expect to be a fully formed plan to be born in the next, you know, 48 business hours, you know? Uh, but you know, if Joan has some questions that we can answer through the administration, that would be great.
I just want to see the plan. And if, if, if we, can I, Dave, can I amend your motion? Cause I think.
Please.
This might, and that we're directing you to produce a fully, or that we're requesting that you produce a fully formed hybrid plan. Period. Does that come encapsulate both sides of things?
I'll second Joan's amendment because I do think that that is more aligned with, with what I was looking for.
Okay. So let's vote on this motion. Um, Joan, just repeat it, the amendment. So everybody knows what we're voting on.
I don't remember Dave's part of it.
I'm, 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 I'm now for probably a third or fourth time. It's a motion for the administration to provide us with, uh, more comprehensive, um, detail on the hybrid plan. And your amendment is to, um, repeat that, Joan. It's getting late and I'm pretty tired here.
Basically, it's, it's just restating what you're saying in a different way. It's with the, um, to, to fully, to create that, we would like, we want to see it written down. We want to see the hybrid plan written down. We intend, we would, we would like to see a fully formed hybrid plan. Well, that's the direction we're going in. We want to do a hybrid plan, but we need more information.
So, so a word document rather.
Donna, do you need us yet? I'm staying muted.
All right. Let's vote on that motion. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, all in favor? Can I? Sorry, Emery, were you opposed or were you in favor?
No, I'm in favor.
Okay, okay.
Worded like that, I'll go for it.
Oh, boy.
Is the committee interested at all in asking the administrators to look into the phased approach as part of the motion that we just approved?
Can we come back to that at some point?
Well, how do we come back to it if it's part of what we're looking, if, if, if we are looking at doing it?
I, I don't think that's imperative for the first part of.
Okay.
I, you mean that, here's my problem. Well, I, I, you know, without talking to my wife and her list, but here's my problem. There's, there's, there's only so much time in a day. So, you know, I, I can't, I can't keep going in circles because I'm not going forward. And that's, that's where I'm at right now. So, need to get this done so we can get in on the 11th ish. Hopefully if they grant us a waiver at the, at this point in time, and then we will, otherwise I'm trying to post it and do all that at, at midnight or something like that on Monday night. So, um, you know, there's a lot of work to do between, between now and Monday at this point. So, but thank you for the direction.
So obviously it's 10:30 and there's a lot still on our agenda and there's some things that, um, we, we can bump. There are some things that I don't know how much we can bump them. I, I think as the committee, we have to have conversations offline about more meetings at this point. I know we're meeting on the 10th, but we then aren't scheduled to meet again till September 9th. And there's policy work related to the reopening that cannot wait until September 9th. So looking at the agenda, um, we have the request from the administrative team around masks and also the policy from MASC. Um, we have the end of year report from Ms. Sheridan that I think is really important and we need to know, but I'm also wondering if we move that to Monday. Um, we have, uh, Dr. Thompson's evaluation, uh, the North Schools Listen Initiative. I think we should bump that to Monday if everybody on the committee agrees. Uh, we have three policies. I need a second vote that I think will be quick. Um, there's a brand new policy from MASC on policy issues for the pandemic that we can move to Monday. A couple more days on that is not going to be harmful. So help me, committee, prioritize these things for tonight and then be moved to Monday. Maya?
Um, I think with the end of your report, I think Ms. Sheridan was prepared to maybe give us a very brief overview. Uh, but like, I don't think anybody wants to dive into the detail tonight, but I think we could do something briefly with that. I do think we should have the mask conversation today and I think we should have to, uh, discuss the superintendent's evaluation today.
Okay. And then the quick, I, I would like to do.
Oh, and yeah, and those other three policies and second votes. Yeah.
So is everybody okay then with us moving the North Schools Listen Initiative and the, um, MASC guidance and policy issues to the next meeting? Those would be the two things we're talking about moving.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So then, um, let's talk about the mask policy. Uh, Dr. Thompson, would you please remind the committee, um, what it is you are requesting us to consider on that?
Uh, I, I am requesting, uh, that the school committee consider, uh, extending the mask requirement down at least to kindergarten. And, and you heard, um, Carolyn say the preschool should be included with that, but that, that would be my recommendation based on, uh, stakeholder, uh, feedback that we've received.
Okay. So we have that recommendation, which does tie into the policy that we need to have a first vote on. So the MASC gave us the face covering policy. It's filed EBCFA. And you can see that in your pocket. And again, just so everybody is aware that, um, in this policy before us, they do say, um, a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds and on school transportations. Even when social distancing is observed, exempted from this policy are students in grades one and below. So we cannot both approve that model policy and do the recommendation of the administrative team. We need to determine which one we're going with. Uh, Maya?
So I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the policy, but striking that language exempted from this policy, our students in grades one and below.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
I will second that.
Thank you. Is there discussion on that motion, Joan?
Um, um, I, I would like to know the rationale for including them. I would like to know the rationale for striking the language and, um, not hearing, uh, the email that came from Segal seemed to be pretty much like in agreement, in agree, in agreement with the mask. Mask, a mask, with the mask, um, guidance. So I'd like to hear some rationale behind who are the stakeholders that you heard from and why?
Uh, I'm sorry, parents, parents and teachers concerned about being in close contact with students with people not wearing masks.
Maya?
Um, it wasn't, it was also, um, our administrative team, Carolyn Robbins and Lori Semino were both recommending this. Um, I think that the way I heard Segal's, um, rec- recommendation is she, she doesn't think it's necessary. She thinks that there are other, um, you know, that the, that you can use other methods. Um, I'm just kind of in the suspenders and a belt category right now. Um, and, and I think that, um, you know, I, I do fully agree, you know, I, I don't discount what Segal is saying, that you can't count that preschoolers and kindergartners are going to, you know, wear their masks perfectly and, and things like that. But I also think that, um, it is something that, uh, families have asked for. It's something that teachers have asked for and, um, I think that even if it's not absolutely necessary, you know, sometimes it can just be a reminder. I mean, even if masks aren't necessarily doing a great job of, uh, you know, because they might be moved and things like that. It's, uh, will keep kids from touching their, their mouths and noses a little bit, you know? I just, I don't, I don't see a strong reason not to have them do it. And I have heard arguments to have them do it. So that's what my, why I come down on that side of it.
Ms. Robbins?
Um, if I could just offer two more pieces of insight from my conversations that I've had, um, with Jill Driscoll, but also with, um, uh, other colleagues in other districts who are grappling with this issue. You know, first of all, um, you know, the nurse leaders as well as preschool directors are reporting that programs that are coming in the summertime, so people who have had EYS services and have, have been having their preschoolers, special education preschoolers, wearing masks are actually doing a very good job of it. Um, and actually are, we're, we're hearing reports that younger kids are doing a better job than older kids with wearing their masks. Um, so, um, I don't think we can, we should really discount the fact that they can't wear them or that they're not going to wear them effectively. Because I think we can help them to wear them effectively. Um, and then the other piece is to say, you know, um, we have to be mindful about the messages we're sending to our young kids too, which is to say that when you go to the grocery store, you have to wear a mask, but when you come to school, you don't. Um, you know, CDC is really recommending kids ages two and up wear masks. Um, and so that's really what parents should be doing with their kids when they're bringing them out in the public. And so I think, you know, we can be consistent in what we're teaching our kids, which is, you know, that these masks are important to be wearing. Um, and then of course, there is also the, the issue of wanting to protect our teachers. And I really want to speak on their behalf, which is to say that, um, you know, when Segal was talking about additional social distancing measures, um, you know, I get that, you know, we can absolutely do that. But the reality is that three year olds are the least likely to stay six feet apart from one another. Um, so I think we have to think about if we can add, like you said, that extra layer of protection. I think, I think it, it makes a lot of sense. So that's just kind of some additional insight from my, my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two, two concerns. Um, I want to make sure with this policy across the board, and I don't see it explicitly addressed in the MASCs. I don't know if there's some editing we want to do that. We're not disciplining students, um, because they're not wearing their masks. There's so many reasons why, whether in just a moment or a longer term thing going on with kids, that it, it just might be really hard. Um, and, and I, and I think we all will agree to this, you know, in theory, but I just want to make sure, you know, once you put a policy in place that then turns into procedure. And I just think it has to be put in writing somewhere, um, in the policy before us. Um, and I can send this out to the administrative team because I realize that other than Lori and Alec, you probably haven't seen it. It just came out today. So I apologize for not getting that out to everyone. Um, it does say in this policy, um, if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parents slash guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate. Or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. That language is, uh, just feeling a little heavy for me when we're now talking about adding in four, five and six year olds. So that's one of my concerns.
So I hear.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I do hear what you're saying because I get when policy is written, that's, it's like kind of, you know, that we defer back to that policy. But I think this is an instance in where you really have to try to put some, uh, you really have to kind of put your trust in early childhood educators for making good decisions about their kids. And I don't think any first grade teacher or any preschool teacher is going to be forcing a child who is upset or, um, you know, or really truly resisting wearing a mask. Um, I don't think they're going to sit there and say, you know, now you have to go to the principal's office because you didn't wear your mask. I mean, we, 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 we know our kids' limits. We learn our kids' limits and, um, I mean, we, 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 we know our kids' limits, we learn our kids' limits and, um, we would certainly be, be sensitive to that. So I want to just reassure you that I think the teachers and certainly me as an administrator, although I'm not with you for very much longer, but, um, I'm sure whoever would be coming on board would be sensitive to the fact that we're not going to be disciplinary in the sense that way with, with little ones. It's really, and in my mind, I really envision it as a teaching moment and an opportunity to, to help them build this skill of mask wearing.
My, my second concern is actually more public health related. So, um, public health measures are only as effective as the person doing them. There's a lot of human behavior that goes into any public health measures. And, um, as Segal identified, you know, proper mask wearing is really important and not wearing a mask correctly can actually increase your risk of exposure to not only COVID, but, uh, you know, realistically other germs. So I'm just a little, you know, what she had talked about in her email, um, if our youngest kiddos aren't keeping them on and they're pulling them down to their chin or they're taking them on or off or they're licking the inside or doing things that preschoolers might do. I, I don't know if inadvertently by saying this, we might be making things worse. So those are just my thoughts. Other discussion points from the committee? So my of your motion was to approve the policy as it's put forth by the MASC, but striking the sentence, um, one, two, striking the sentence in the second paragraph, um, exempted from this policy are students in grades one and below, correct?
Yes. So it would be an effect for all of our students and all adults who go into the classroom or go into the schools, not just the classroom, into the schools.
Right. And, and on transportation and the other areas identified in policy. Was there a second on that? I think there was. Just remind me. Um, Donna, can you check the minutes?
I think Dave seconded.
I have Dave done.
Thank, okay. Okay. Uh, Dr. Thompson and then Anne Marie.
Yeah, can I, uh, I just want to make a, a, a quick comment that masks are required for all students, no matter age, on buses. So that is, uh, that is something to consider as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anne Marie?
Um, I'm just worried, I'm sure I'm up mute again. Yes. I'm worried about the way this is written specifically, that it does not leave any room for the mask breaks. So it actually, as written, says you keep it on all the time that you're on school grounds.
No.
It says, it says a while outside. So I, I do see that note now. It says while outside.
And it says specifically during mask breaks, that first bullet there.
Yeah, the, what I'm, oh, yeah, it does, but I guess what I'm saying is it's contradicting. So it says face covering will be worn even when social distancing is observed. And then two paragraphs later says, when social distancing is, is enforced, you don't have to wear it. So I just feel like that it's, it's contradictory language and I don't know how to fix it, but I, I think that is, is the even when social distancing is observed specifically supposed to be for school transportation?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I just, as, as I read it, I got a little concerned and then I saw that the mask break. And then I said, well, wait a minute, that's completely conflicting in the language. Okay. If that's just supposed to be for the bus, then I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion on this policy? Okay. All in favor to approve it with the one line removed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. So Ms. Sheridan, do you want to give us your end of year fiscal report, please?
Okay. I, I'm going to start with that, that budget. And, um, I want to say that, um, this is my budget update as of Sunday I did it. Uh, there's a lot of, um, incumbents that have not gone through the MUNA system as of that date. So I do expect there's going to be some more funds that you're going to have available, um, after this report. So I'll start by saying if it were not this year with the COVID crisis, um, I'd be reporting what great shape you're in. But given this uncertainty, um, what I can report is that I think you do have additional funds this year, um, available that you did not have last year. All right. So starting with the general fund, uh, with the general fund, that anticipation is going to be that you would return, uh, $68,993, um, to the town. And that is the vote of the override expenditures that were, um, were, excuse me, unspent. As of the report on, when I looked on Sunday and worked this weekend on it, the amount of money for circuit breaker that you had with this report, um, you were going to have a balance of $1,0877,316 for your circuit breaker. Um, you, you carried over 1,006, 1,006,044 for the FY '20 year. So that is an additional 289,274 of circuit breaker funds that you would have for fiscal year '21. Uh, and when I look today, a lot of the incumbents were starting to, to be entered into the MUNA system. Um, and from what I'm anticipating right now, I think you're going to have, um, closer to the total amount of circuit breaker that you brought in this year, which in my eyes is a goal that every district should have, that if you could possibly hold on to the amount of circuit breaker that you brought in, because you have two years to spend it, that's an absolute great goal for a district. And given these circumstances, um, I, that's what I'm hoping is going to happen. So that would be that you'd have about 2,999,000 in your circuit breaker and you have budgeted for 2,755,000. So, um, as of right now, I think with the circuit breaker, um, it's probably the best you could have done. So, because you can only, um, carry over the two years. All right? Um, I will give you a more detailed, um, report on the general fund. When I just have to do, make sure that all the incumbents are closed out. And that is a little bit of more analysis, but not very much. And then I'll give you a more detailed with the notes and everything, so you can really see what expenditures you got this year. For the grant updates, um, uh, for the grants, um, I did give you some spreadsheets on the grants, but because of time, I'll try to just go through my notes and then if you have questions, you can ask me them. So, uh, I gave you the, the spreadsheets that, um, indicated the categories that the grants were spent, the amount of money that you had in. Um, and with the FY '19 and FY '20 grants, um, you are ending the year with 520,344 of funds available to spend in FY '21. Part of that is because the Department of Ed, given the COVID-19 situation, allows you to carry over the funds longer. Um, so you still have 520 of, that's the older grants, FY '19 and FY '20. Um, just to give you an example of what those grants paid for this year, um, you had the teachers, the parents, the nurse, the adjustment counselor, you have career therapists. I mean, the career specialists, you had therapists, you had stipends for mentoring, you had summer school, you had PD, instructional supplies, conferences, contracted services, technology. So obviously the grants really pay for a lot for your district, uh, very important. Uh, the grant awards for FY '21 are certainly increasing this year. Um, and the grants, the grant award for FY '21 to date are 2,831,834. Um, the, um, the grants that you have gotten in so far, uh, the title grants, you've gotten the IDEA grant, which is the 240 grant, um, that's for the disabilities, disability, the, um, I'm sorry, Individuals with Disabilities Grant. Um, you've gotten in the, um, the Early Childhood Sped Entitlement Grant. Um, and you've also gotten in the ESSA Grant, which is the CARES Act Grant. There's two other grants that we're, um, they're applying for now, but we've already know the amount of money that we're getting for those. Um, and that's a Summer Vacation Learning Program Grant and the CVRF Grant. Um, the total grants is 2,831,834. So thus far, and it's only the beginning of the year, you've already got over a million dollars, um, worth of additional grant funding this year. Um, the, the new grants, the ESSA Grant, the CARES Grant, that's the emergency relief funds to address the impact of COVID-19. Um, and that is the one that is, uh, 345,607. Um, the Summer and Vacation Learning Program Grant is also a new grant for this year. That's $12,000. That's to expand and enhance high-quality virtual hybrid combination for summer and school vacation. And then the, the big one that we just got in, just got is a CVRF Grant, which is to provide eligible school districts, so you've got $225 per student based on your FY '21 foundation enrollment. And that's 781,875. The only thing with this grant is it only runs to December. So that's why I was indicating that it's not a grant that would be great to use for, um, for your staffing. However, I did talk to the Department of Ed and what he did suggest you might want to do is you already applied for your ESSA Grant, but you can move some of that money from your ESSA Grant into the CVRF Grant and spend the CVRF Grant through the December and free up some of your money in the ESSA Grant. So that is something that you can consider, um, when you're making your decisions on finding the money for this new plan that you have. The revolving funds, I'll move on to your revolving funds. Again, with revolving funds, you're in much better, better shape this year. Um, the available fund in the revolving account is 2,886,897. That, that also includes the circuit breaker. Um, and if you include the circuit breaker, um, with the revolving funds, hold on one second, it's an increase of 639,298. And most of that is the school bus fees has more in there revolving this year, because we were able to, um, pay the school bus, um, contract out of the general fund, given the situations with the COVID-19. Um, one other thing I did want to mention was that the, um, extended day, the extended day now has a little bit of money in it and that is due to the fact that it received, um, money from the COVID, from the COVID-19 from the town. So they did receive the money to pay for all their payroll, plus a teensy bit of money to start the new year. So they are right now extended day. I think they started, they have about, uh, 20,000 or so in there. So then, then no longer negative for that, the, um, extended day. Um, so to make this really quick, and I can certainly, um, expand upon it at a later time and you can certainly ask me any questions. Uh, so right now you have the available grant funds unspent from FY '20 is 520,344. You have an increase of grants of a mil, over a million dollars. Um, you have additional monies available from the revolving funds, which is, um, 639,298, but I do expect that to increase, given the fact that I think you're going to be able to save a little bit more of your, um, circuit breaker funds. Um, so, um, again, if it weren't COVID-19, you'd be really swimming in it and having a great year. Um, so hopefully we can try to come up with a plan with all this money that you have and try to expend it to the best of our ability with, um, whatever plan you just, you decide on. So that's a really quick one. And if you have any other questions, I can certainly answer them either now or at a later time. And we'll give a much better, um, of that general fund. I probably need about one more week to finish that up.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. I, I always find your notes very helpful and I, I know others do as well. So thank you for being so thorough.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions on the end of the year report as was just shared with us, uh, right now? Just something for us to think about as a budget subcommittee, Maya and Karen and Dave. I, I think we probably need to meet sometime soon. Sorry.
We figured it, Teresa.
Well, we'll talk about that tomorrow offline, but I, we have some work to start doing. Anything else to share on tonight?
I'm all set unless you have any questions.
Not seeing any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, Dr. Thompson's evaluation, uh, Maya and Joan, do you want to take us through? Just so the community knows, the draft compilation document that we're about to reference is posted on the school district's website on the school committee page. Um, so it is available there and it was posted earlier today, uh, which is the same time that the committee members received it.
I don't know what the most efficient way to move through this is. We have a couple of places that we need to discuss where we had splits.
I think Maya, in the past years, when you guided us through it, you just did like a, a, a quick, like, it was more complicated those past couple of years. I think we've, we've gotten more efficient at this process. But do you want to just like take us through like this goal, everybody agreed and he's rated it as this, but this goal, there is an area that we need to discuss, like maybe just go through it in that way or?
Sure. I think you're right. I think we did something like that. Joan, do you want to start or you want me to?
I can start because I did the, uh, I can start. For the, um, so just so folks know, it's, there's a, there's district improvement goals, there's student learning goals, there's professional practice goals, and then there's standards that are laid out by DUCY. So starting with the district improvement goals, um, the first one was facilitation and reporting of the strategic plan, progress and outcomes. Uh, the committee felt that Dr. Thompson met this, uh, goal. Uh, district improvement goal number two was around contract negotiations. Um, we felt that, the committee felt that Dr. Thompson met this goal as well, leaving an overall rating for district improvement goals of met. Um, student learning goal number one, um, continued, was around continuing the development of instructional strategies. The committee felt that, um, Dr. Thompson had met this goal. Um, the second student learning goal is an area where we had a divide. Student learning goal number two was to implement a student assessment system, Renaissance, across the district for the purpose of supporting student learning, informing instruction and intervention practices. Um, we had two significant progresses and two mets. Would you like to pause and discuss or would you like to just keep going?
Why don't we pause and, and discuss? So we had said at our previous meetings, when we were determining how we would handle a situation like this, since there was only four of us and we could have a two-to-two, um, that we obviously would discuss. Then after discussion, if we agree, um, we would go with the, um, the higher rating. So there is potential, if we discuss and agree, that this student learning goal two, um, could be identified as met unless we vote as a committee to go in another way.
I would just like to note that this is in the draft, but the committee agrees in the comments on the status of the implementation. So we agree fundamentally about what has been done, that was clear from our comments, but we did not agree on the rating. So it seems to be an interpretation of the rating is the issue.
Okay. That's helpful to, to know. Is there a motion for how we want to proceed with two significant progress and two met?
So it, I'll just continue summarizing unless somebody jumps in. Um, the committee agreed that Renaissance was piloted and implemented and going well. The committee had been kept informed of this implementation, where the difference in ratings seemed to come about, uh, seemed to be around whether or not, um, it needed to be fully and completely implemented in order to be met or whether or not that the progress that we had all seen, um, could qualify as met, if that makes sense. So it's full implementation versus, um, the whole, versus, um, uh, ongoing implementation that is on schedule.
And I, and I do believe, um, that part of the reason, uh, that this was one of the goals that post COVID-19 hitting our town and we reevaluated when we paused some things in March, this was one of them that we had to pause. So there were some things that initially were not achieved because of the pandemic experience. But up until March, what was determined to be achieved was achieved. Am I correct in that assessment?
Correct. That is why I, I, am I, I, that's why I considered this to be a met, was because had COVID-19 not happened, there was no indication that this would not have been met.
Okay. So, um, I'm not supposed to make motions this chair. I can if nobody else is in a place to, but does somebody want to make a motion on how to handle this rating?
Well, we need to discuss it and come up with it, right?
We just, I'll make a motion that we rate this as met and then that will be the way that we can discuss this and, you know.
Right. Okay. Is there a second on that motion? Joan, you seconding it? Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anne Marie, are you abstaining from voting on the evaluation or how would you? Anne-Marie abstaining, uh, abstaining from voting on the evaluation or, or how would you like to proceed?
Can I vote? I don't, I didn't.
Yeah.
Tribute. So can I vote on the evaluation?
You can, you can vote on the evaluation as supposed to prepare by the other four of us or you can abstain. It's up to you.
No, I didn't know if procedurally, if I was allowed to, since I didn't actually.
No, you are, you are. Absolutely.
Well, then yes.
Thank you. All right. So five zero student learning goal, uh, number two, um, should now be reflected in the, um, evaluation as being met. So, um, Joan, are you going to continue or is Maya taking over at this point?
You're muted, Joan.
Don't we wish I had been muted earlier? So that does bring us to the second, um, place where we had a divide, which was we had two significant progresses and two mets. However, we now have two mets. So I'd like to make a motion that the overall, um, student learning goal be changed to met.
I'll second that.
Thank you. With any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. So that'll also be changed. Student learning goal overall will now be met.
Correct. Um, professional practice goals, um, the comm, professional practice goal number one was to conduct regular visits to the buildings to evaluate district progress on goals and initiatives. Um, the committee considered progress in the school prior to the pandemic. Um, and we're pleased to note that Dr. Thompson appears to prioritize his visits to the school. So we consider this goal as met. Um, standard one, student instructional leadership. Um, this was around meeting diverse needs, uh, while observing principal practice and artifacts regularly provides feedback to ensure that principals are identifying and promoting appropriate inclusive teaching practices that meet the diverse learning needs of all students. This, um, the committee felt that this was, that Dr. Thompson was proficient in this area and specifically noted, uh, Ms. Minow's leadership as well. Indicator one E was plans and goals, which involves, which around, is around involving stakeholders, creating, involving stakeholders in creating district improvement and annual action plans comprised of focused measurable goals informed by evidence-based assessments of organizational performance, educator effectiveness and the growth, learning and achievement of all students, regularly monitors and shares progress with the community, um, and supports principals to align school improvement plans with district, um, plans and goals. The committee felt that this was, uh, this was proficient. Um, and were, um, particularly pleased with the school improvement plans as evidence of this as well as the strategic plan. And so that provided an overall instructional leadership rating of proficient. Want me to keep going? Yes. Okay. Um, standard two, I know we're not done. So yes. Standard two, management operation, um, was around, the one that we were specifically evaluating on was time for collaboration. Sets expectations for regular collaboration around administrators and promotes scheduling. That ensures sufficient time for collaboration within and across schools. Establishes norms, supports principals to do the same for their students. Um, the committee felt that Dr. Thompson was proficient in this, um, specifically appreciating his collaborative approach during the budgeting process, specifically with the town leaders. Um, and we felt that his leadership in this area allowed, um, for greater, um, collaboration between the town and the schools, both during the budget process as well as during the pandemic. Um, okay, fiscal systems indicator two E, this is one where we have a split vote as well. Um, and this was develops a budget aligned with the district's vision, mission, mission and goals that addresses the needs of all students, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school level goals and available resources, and effectively communicates budget rationale to staff, community members and other stakeholder groups. We have two exemplaries and two proficiency. And again, the committee also specifically called out Ms. Minow and Ms. Sheridan, um, as also, um, significantly, um, providing leadership. Two exemplaries, two proficiency, we need to vote.
Okay.
Or talk about it.
Yeah. Is there a motion for, uh, which rating we want to go with? And then after the motion's on the table, we can discuss. Maya. Oh, Maya, you're muted.
Sorry, I had to switch devices because my other one, the battery was dying. That's what happens when meetings last five hours. So, uh, I, I'll make a motion that we rate this as proficient.
As proficient? Sorry, you broke up. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, that's proficient.
Um, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Um, discussion around the motion that the, um, indicator two E fiscal system rating be proficient. No discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Yes. Okay. Joan, you want to continue taking us through? Joan, you're muted again.
Sorry, the overall for standard two then, um, uh, was proficient. And we specifically commended that Dr. Thompson and his leadership style enabled his administration team to handle the unexpected challenges of this year in an admirable fashion. Um, and we wanted to specifically include that that includes the increase in English language learners out of district special education placements as well as the pandemic. Put that in there.
I mean, what an easy year, Dr. Thompson.
Right. Well, I know. I realize people could see, people could see that. And I think it was just about the pandemic, but it wasn't. The committee specifically called out the increases that we were also dealing with earlier. Yeah. Okay. Um, Maya, do you want to?
Sure, I can jump in. Um, the, uh, standard three is family and community engagement. Um, the indicator three A is community and stakeholder engagement. It establishes strategic relationships with community organizations, community members and businesses, engage them to maximize community involvement and district effectiveness. And the committee rated Dr. Thompson as exemplary in this, um, area. In particular noted, um, the work with the career pathways through, um, Norwood Hospital, with Nora Hospital in Moderna and, um, strong communication and collaboration with general government, especially since the pandemic has hit. Um, indicator three B is student support, provides resources, professional development and related supports to enable the identification of each student's academic, social, emotional and behavioral needs, including students with disabilities and English learners. Supports administrators, collaborate with families to address student needs utilizing resources within and outside of the district. Uh, we rated, uh, Dr. Thompson as proficient in this area. Um, and noted, um, that, uh, with the passage of the override, there were, um, hiring of additional adjustment counselors and, um, uh, English language learning, uh, staff and, and resources. And, um, and then also all the work that had happened, um, post-COVID to support families. Uh, so overall, our standard three, the committee rated Dr. Thompson as, uh, proficient. Standard four is professional culture. Um, four C is communication skills, utilizes strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills to consistently and effectively communicate with stakeholders. Uh, we rated Dr. Thompson as proficient, um, and noted the, um, weekly emails to the committee, um, uh, good use of blackboard emails and calls for parents. And since the pandemic started, the, um, increased communication through media like Facebook Live. So we noted that. Um, can, indicator four D is continuous learning of staff. Sets expectations for administrators and teams to reflect on and collaborate around the effectiveness of a wide range of practices related to instruction and student learning, encourages and models curiosity and a growth mindset, and ensures that all administrators use data, research and best practices to adapt, practice and plan appropriate interventions to achieve improved results. Here again, we rated Dr. Thompson as proficient. Um, we, as a committee, called out his work with, um, professional, uh, with instructional rounds and, um, and the other professional development done around teaching to improving teaching and learning. And, um, the special, uh, professional development that was, uh, planned very quickly as the district, um, switched to the, all remote, um, and after the COVID-19 school shutdown. So overall, standard four, we rate Dr. Thompson as proficient. And therefore, overall, we, um, rate Dr. Thompson as proficient. Um, in this first year after the operational override passed, Dr. Thompson was a very effective leader. With the additional challenge of the COVID-19 pandemic, Dr. Thompson has stepped up and met the challenge as he has worked with many stakeholders for the benefit of our students.
Thank you, Maya and Joan. So, um, I believe we need to vote as a committee to accept the evaluation with the couple of, um, votes that we made tonight. Um, so those changes will be reflected. Um, Maya.
I just realized there's one other thing. The other place where we had a little bit of a, um, a discrepancy was on impact on student learning. Um, two of us rated him as moderate and two of us rated him as high. I will say that it, this is kind of weird in so many other areas of this. There's so much detail in the rubric about like, this is what proficient means and this is what exemplary means and this what needs improvement means. And then when it comes to this, they're like, yeah, just rate it.
Yeah.
Like, by what measure? How do we do this? And there's no room to really, so we rated it and we didn't agree. And, and so that's the last hanging piece on the evaluation.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. So impact on student learning to, um, rate it moderate and to rate it high. So is there a motion for how we would like to reconcile that?
Motion to. Motion to make the rating moderate.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Is there a discussion? So I'm actually, um, won't vote in favor of that motion. So I, I think he had a high impact on student learning, but is there any discussion? Okay, Maya.
I, 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 it's like, I think I was one of the ones who rated him as moderate. And I honestly can't even remember right now because I went back and forth on it so many times. And, uh, for me, it was, you know, what evidence is there of student learning? And I, I'm not doubting that it's there. It's just that, like, when, when we set these goals, I was originally thinking, oh, well, at the end of the year, we'll be looking at some Renaissance data or we'll be looking at, you know, we'll have like, eventually we'll have MCAS data to look at. And then like the pandemic just blew it all up. And so I, I don't doubt that there was the potential for a huge impact on student learning. I just don't see data to necessarily back that up. So I think that's why I went with moderate, but I could be convinced otherwise.
Joan.
Yeah, I actually felt like, um, if we stop it right as we hit COVID, I feel like the, um, presentations that we saw did have quite a bit of that data in the, um, so there was evidence of kind of ongoing strategic use of the data. Um, so I believe that I, I rated it as high.
Okay. So I'll withdraw my motion because I also believe I rated it as high. So if we've got a majority agreeing it's high, we all have bad memory. We're all convinced very late that this, this Wednesday night. So I think it would be, uh, we, we, we've definitely taken down some ratings in favor of, uh, being expeditious. So I think if we can agree that this should be rated high, I think, uh, that would, uh, tip the hat to the leadership of our superintendent.
Okay. So are you making any?
I, I, that is the amended motion, yes.
Just making sure. Okay. Amendment motion that for impacts on student learning is high. Second if I mo, uh, my, Maya. I do know your name, I promise. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. Um, so now at this point that we reconciled all the differences, we need to vote on the, um, the document before us, the evaluation as a whole. Is there a motion on this evaluation for Dr. Thompson?
Motion to Dr. Thompson as proficient in his evaluation.
So, so the motion to approve the whole document as amended to me?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, Joan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, wonderful. Um, Maya or Joan, will one of you just make, um, those couple of edits and send it to Priscilla? Because we do have to get the final version of the evaluation up on the website.
Yeah, I think I was the last one who had the Word document, so I'll, I'll make the edit.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Dr. Thompson, is there anything that you would like to say at 11:10 at night?
Well, yeah, because it is, it is usually my best hour. Yeah, no, I, I, I just want to thank the, uh, thanks committee for the feedback. I have not had the chance to go through the individual pieces. I will do that at some point when I can find the bottom of, uh, of this hole that I've climbed into. But, uh, I, I do appreciate the feedback and it's always good. Um, and I, I just want to thank my team. They've worked incredibly hard this year. So, um, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I know, you know, there's a lot in the document and a lot in our individual, our individual evaluations as well. But I think we all recognize what a extremely challenging year it has been. Um, and, um, personally, I'm very thankful for your leadership and, and your collaboration and all you do for the districts and town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Almost done, guys. And good news is we don't have to go back into executive session. So, you know, not that we're really ending all that much later, we're just not ending an executive session. Don't know if that is a good or bad thing. Um, so the next one, the topic that we do want to, um, wrap up this evening, there are three policies that we voted on, first vote, last meeting. Um, and we want to do a second vote. Um, they are policy IND, school ceremonies and observances. Policy JBB, educational equity. Policy IJR, reconsideration of instructional resources. Um, these have been posted on our website since, uh, July 23rd. I do not believe Dr. Thompson, we've received any community feedback. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we just need a motion for these three policies as a second vote. And then they will, we approve them, will be final and go into our policy manual and on our website.
Motion to approve the three policies.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Joan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Um, I don't think this would be a long conversation, but do you want to wait till next week, next Monday to talk about the, who's going to work on goals for the next round of the superintendent goals? Okay, we'll wait until Monday. So that brings us to, um, the consent agenda. And Dr. Thompson, I believe we have one donation tonight.
We do. Um, it is 75 adjustable elementary student deaths donated by, uh, Peter Cantonese from, uh, Central Chrysler Dodge.
Is there a motion to accept this donation?
So moved.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. Second by Joan. Um, any discussion?
Um, great. Thank you very much to this gentleman that donated so generously before we approve it.
Yeah. Um, which elementary school are they going to, Dr. Thompson?
You didn't tell me those, the quiz that, uh, after. Yes.
To be determined.
Yes.
Yes. They are going to an elementary school.
They are going, they are definitely going to, to, to an elementary school.
And you'll let us know once they're there.
I shall. I'll take a picture of them, put them in the slide.
So all in favor of accepting this donation?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, wonderful. So at this point, um, is school committee agenda. Uh, Anne-Marie, do you have anything tonight?
I do not.
Dave Catania?
Uh, there's a lot of thoughts going through my head, a little bit of it slipped out when I was trying to make a motion today. But there's, there's, there's a lot of information out there and I'm still trying to formulate how to properly explain my position on, on this major, uh, once in a hundred year situation we find ourselves in, you know? So, uh, this is now the third time that I'm punting and saying I don't have a complete thought to express myself to the, 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 the community and our, 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 our staff. Uh, but let me just say, uh, you know, Dr. Thompson, thank you very much for everything you've done. Um, you know, if, if we evaluated everything before the pandemic, uh, I think you did an excellent job. Uh, during this pandemic, you've done a fantastic job. So, you know, I think that as we look at your goals, we should definitely take that into account on the next evaluation. Uh, so thank you very much for everything you've done and, uh, for, you know, going through everything that we, we put you through. And just thank you. We couldn't, uh, do this without everything you've been doing. So, and I'll, I'll end my rambling comments there.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Joan, do you have anything this evening?
I just want to, um, thank the administrative team despite the fact that we ended up having a heated debate about the reopening and the hybrid and the remote. Um, please note that any frustration that you are hearing is solely directed at the commissioner. And recognizing that you all are trying to do an impossible task. and recognizing that you all are trying to do an impossible task. I just want to, I want to thank you for your efforts. I think you guys did a great job. And again, we are all just trying to do what's best for our students and our teachers and our community.
Thank you, Joan. Maya?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Just to reiterate what others have said, thank you to the administrative team. We, we need to have discussions. We need to have debates. We're doing our job as a school committee, asking questions and thinking these things, these things through comprehensively. So we, we need to do so and we're doing so respectfully and thoughtfully. So thank you to everybody still on the meeting and thank you to everybody who joined us earlier and to the community. We all know how hard this is. And we all know that the uncertainty and the fluidity of the situation is causing all of us stress. And I would just encourage us to continue taking care of each other as much as we can as a community because we need to continue to do so. This unfortunately is not going away anytime soon. And we will be back as a school committee on Monday, August 10th at 5:00 PM. And Dave, I guess we have to work on the agenda already tomorrow and get that posted tomorrow.
Yeah, that's going to be tough.
It's okay. You all know I'm a crazy night owl. I will work on the agenda as soon as we're done here and I will send it to you to review.
And a letter, and a letter to the commissioner.
Well, you need to tell me what I have to write in order for me to do that, so.
Dear Commissioner.
I am happy to tell you what to write to the commissioner.
No, Joan, you're going to be censored from this letter.
Let Joan write the letter.
Be very polite, but it would ever say, we respectfully are going to wait and stop wasting time if you're going to continue to come out with guidance. Respectfully, kisses, the Norwood.
Well, on that note, I do need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Joan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you.